Waiting for them to acknowledge your presence. Usually. Yeah, that's pretty strange, huh? Use my other hand, maybe you can't see me. There we go. Okay, folks, we're going to call the meeting of the Select Board to order. This is the meeting for September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And let's start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Everybody stand. Okay, well, thanks, everybody. We've got a pretty busy schedule tonight. We do not have any public hearings or presentations. We do have open time for the public for the first ten, fifteen minutes. Does anybody have something? Tammy, sorry.
Tammy Walunas, two ninety-eight College Highway. On behalf of the Historical Society, I would like to welcome people to... Our annual meeting is going to be on September twenty-third. It's a Thursday evening, seven o'clock. Normally about an hour and a half. It is here in the conference room because we're going to have a slideshow. We also collect dues at that time. Individual membership is fifteen dollars. Family membership is twenty-five. And it's a fun-filled evening of different activities. The other big event that the Historical Society is going to be doing is the Cemetery Walk. That is going to be October sixteenth with a rain date of the seventeenth, from one to four, at the Center Cemetery. And we ask that please contact us for making your reservations. We are going to ask that people wear masks, even if you're vaccinated. And what else? Oh, the tickets. You can do... You can let us know on Facebook, at our Facebook page, which is Southampton Mass Historical Society. You can email us at ClarkChapman1827@gmail.com. And we are working with the senior center to coordinate people that don't have access to computers, that they will be able to communicate to someone there, and we'll get a listing of how many people and what hours that they want.
Are you going to have a time schedule so people sign up for a time?
Yes, yeah. Starting at one o'clock, there are going to be twenty-minute sessions. Ten people plus a guide. And we will do those through. We're working on about eight historians right now, possibly nine. And if you are interested in volunteering and helping, you know, bring out your acting skills, please, by all means, contact us and we will work with you. So, thank you so much.
Great. Now, that was a great, great success last year, so good luck.
It was so much fun.
Hope it comes off well.
I just got to comment that this mic is very low.
Mic is low in here? The mic is not working?
It's low. It's hard to hear.
Is there... I guess maybe pull the mic closer to you? Is there... Hope it's on. Let's be sure. Yeah, okay. All right, anyone else? Yes, come on up.
Hi there. Melody Cowan, twelve Montgomery Road. I'm here because I have a memo for the Select Board, which I wanted to personally deliver. And in the interest of time, I did want to highlight a couple of things within the content. The first one being, January through March of this year, I address memos or emails to the Select Board. I got no responses, other than we're working on it. On June second, I sent an email to Ed Gibson requesting answers to my questions. To date, I have not received a response. The other... I wanted to ask the Board, because I haven't been able to find it, when the Board approved and signed the letter of engagement for the auditors. That's supposed to be done in a public meeting. Third, I received a copy of the September ninth expense report. There are mistakes. The zoning board revolving account is missing. It's totally gone. It's had the wrong amount in two... in two thousand twenty-one. So, you can't issue a report that's incorrect.
No, we understand, yep.
The other thing, the last thing I wanted, and it gives you more detail, is I really have a concern about your Board taking action to appointing Ed Gibson temporary accountant again. We didn't have much success with that period of time, and we're in trouble. So with that, I end... And I would like to hand each of you...
Thank you. Okay? Anybody else? Thanks very much. Yes, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lauren Houts. I'm the principal at Hampshire Regional High School. I'm here tonight because one of my students is on your agenda, and I know he's not able to make it. So I told his mom I was happy to come and speak on his behalf. So I'm happy to speak more when that comes up, if that's okay with you.
Perfect, yeah. It's on the agenda, so we've got a few things before that.
Yep, I just wanted you to know why I was here.
Perfect, no, that's very much. Thanks, that's very helpful. Okay, anyone else for open time for the public? All right. Well, if not, I think we're going to move into our first set of quote-unquote quarterly reports. As we note, they're not exactly quarterly. They probably will end up being more like twice a year, just given the number of committees and boards and department heads that we want to go through. And we have our first set tonight, which is the Assessor, the Interim Accountant, the Treasurer Collector, and the Finance Committee. So thanks, everybody, for getting to us a little bit of a written report of what you were going to talk about. That really helps us. And I think if people have had a chance to look at it ahead of time, they may have some questions for you. But I think we'll just go down in order. So April, would you like to speak on behalf of the Board of Assessors? And if you want to just run through your report, that's fine. This is the first time, just to remind everybody, we have set up a schedule, and this is the first set. So every meeting, we're going to be doing the first forty-five minutes or so, trying to do reports so that we can hear directly from the various department heads and committees and commissions themselves, and be aware of any particular issues that we should know about. We've asked for a little bit... We've given a bit of an outline and guidance to prepare that narrative, so go for it.
April West, fifty-four Strong Road, Board of Assessors. The Board of Assessors, we have two newer members. I'm the senior member, and I'm in my third year. So we do not have a lot of long-term history. Our principal assessor left a couple of... Well, it's been a month. Time goes by so fast. For a better-paying position with another town. And we, as the Board of Assessors, are charged with finding the replacement. That is not a Select Board or a Town Administrator responsibility. Had I known that, when I put my hand up for the Board of Assessors, it may have been a different decision than I made. So it places great stress on this newer Board to find and hire a principal assessor, someone who's qualified. And so that is what we are tasked with doing. We have put out advertisements to the professional websites and organizations for assessors, and we have not had one application. That said, we do have someone who is willing to step to the plate, who's working for a couple of other local towns, who hopefully will be accepted to come in as an interim so that he and the Board of Assessors can work together and at least keep us on task for all of the deadlines that the Assessor's Office has to meet. So our current priorities and activities are hiring the interim assessor and continuing to search for a full-time assessor. We need to calculate new growth for fiscal year twenty-two and establish new values for fiscal year twenty-two. That deadline is next... No, tomorrow. We're not going to meet that deadline, obviously, because we're still working very hard to try to keep ourselves afloat. Thankfully, that is not a hard and fast deadline. I want to put kudos out for Janine, who has stepped to the plate and gotten our CPA fund deadline met. So we submitted that paperwork and numbers on time, at least to the next place in town, which is the Accountant's Office, who has to sign off on that to get it to the state. We are in the process of accepting and reviewing Chapter sixty-one and Veterans Exemptions applications. And there is always some task that needs to be dealt with relatively quickly. The next item is budget spending status and concerns. So we are... The Assessor Department is currently staying within budget. We will need to, when it's time at the end of the fiscal year, transfer funds from the principal assessor wage line to the assistant assessor wage line to cover extra hours that our assistant assessor is working. And we're staying within our budget. We are very aware that we... When we hire someone, we need to not exceed the budget line. So we've been doing some math. Our biggest concern is attracting a qualified candidate for principal assessor. And to do that, we need to pay a higher wage than we can offer at this time. In fact, most of the town employees are not paid a competitive wage, which I know the Board of Select... The Select Board is certainly aware of. And we can't compete if another town comes and is offering five or six dollars more an hour, more hours. It's just... It's hard. It's hard for Southampton to keep qualified and good employees. So I think the town needs to make a decision as to what we want our town to look like. And the reason I'm telling you this, because you all know this, is so that it's on the record. Let's see. The next is personnel and staffing updates. As I said, we have not had one application for the full-time principal assessor position. To bring on this interim person, I had to wait a month to meet with the PPPB, which is on Thursday of this week, in order to be able to bring somebody on, which is a frustration. In the real world, you have somebody that's ready, willing, and able to work. And it's just the process takes a lot longer, it feels like to me, than I think it should. All right. Next, plans and events for the next four to six months. The Board will be looking to restructure the principal assessor duties to streamline efficiency. We do believe that our past principal assessor was doing a lot of clerical work, that we may be able to hire another person to be trained to do the clerical work at a lower rate. And then maybe we can offer the principal assessor position at twenty hours a week with a higher hourly rate and benefits. Maybe we can share with another local municipality. It might be something that we can do to be able to bring Southampton into being able to get a qualified candidate. Long-term issues for Select Board consideration and planning. Competitive wages for the department. Placing more importance on our finance team, and that is accountant, treasurer, and assessor. Without those people, those employees in this town, our revenue stream... I mean, that's... That's what makes the town work. And I think that those people that are doing those jobs need to be recognized on a regular basis. I think all of our town employees who are working for less than competitive wages, and I hear it a lot, should be recognized. There are little things that the town can do to be able to make people feel important and just recognize them. An employee of the month. Give them lanyards that say they're town employees so we can recognize them. And suggested tools and resources that will help us do our job more efficiently or cost-effectively. So the Assessor Department could use some technology tools to help the assessor do a better, more effective job. There are some software programs that can help with imagery. More up-to-date equipment in the office would help with efficiency. It would be a capital investment of a few thousand dollars to get some of this imagery software, but it could make the assessor position, well, job, a lot easier and make us more efficient in terms of how we value our properties. The town needs an IT person. I don't know if we have someone on staff, but I have heard that if someone logs in and someone else tries to log in, and someone in another office down the hall tries to log in, we have a problem sometimes getting into our computer system. That takes... It's time away. It keeps our employees rather inefficient because they can't get to work right away and frustrated. And so if there were an IT person on-site once a week, they may be able to address these little issues that some of us are totally clueless in how to fix. And, you know, everybody knows, on Thursday, from ten to three, so-and-so will be here to fix your IT issues. If there aren't IT issues, then you don't have to come in. But that's one recommendation. The other is that I think the town really needs a human resource person who's available for our employees. So there's a person who is qualified to handle HR things. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I think you've touched on several issues that have come before us, and we've tried to start discussing some of those. And that includes HR and includes IT, obviously, with the new tech committee, the ad hoc tech committee, as well as issues about improving our overall financial stability and efficiencies in terms of the services we provide to the citizens. So all of that has been part of our discussion for the last two, three meetings. So very, very appropriate, very timely. Thank you. Anybody have any questions of April before we move on?
I have comments.
Go ahead. Comments, yeah?
So, first of all, I think the... Everything within the town starts with the Assessor's Office, so...
John, could you just move your...
Everything in town starts with the Assessor's Office. Proper assessants gets the tax bills, gets the revenue, makes everything flow. It all starts with the A and the assessors. So right off the bat, I want to thank you and the rest of the Board for everything that you're doing right now, stepping up. And this is more just general comments. But I think we are in a position, because willingly or unwillingly, we as a community have accepted the fact that we want to be a training ground. If you want to be a training ground, then you pay the minimum wages, and you bring the folks in. And this is the consequences that go along with it and what we have right now. I think we have a lot of hard decisions because something has to give, because we can only tax so much. We have timelines that we have to deal with, with the tax bills going out. I am thankful, because I received one, that the supplemental bills went out on time. And that's great. But the... Is the tax bill going to go out on time? You know, there's a trickle effect on timelines that happen. So I just want to reiterate. I know as an elected member of the Board and elected member on this side, I thank you and the rest of the Board for everything you guys are doing under these circumstances. And you have my full support on whatever it is that we can do over a period of time, not three months, but over a two- or three-year process, on how we can rectify the ship and straighten it out. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I did have a couple of things. First, I guess my question is in regards to the increased salary. Is that something that PPP could look at to change the steps? So the grading, or the job description, so that we could offer a more competitive salary?
April, you can speak to that. I believe you've already been before the PPP at one point with a job description, is that right?
So, great question. We have been before the PPP. I wish it was an easier thing to say. And the Board has to rewrite the job description, go back, because we have just been recently rescored. We took a... The principal assessor's position was a non-exempt position, and it now is an exempt position. And we have current scoring for that. But the wage scale, unless we fix the wage scale, that's not going to change much. And the Board of Assessors will be rewriting the job description and the duties. And I think we're looking, like I said, to shrink the principal assessor's job down to the things that someone qualified does. And then come, you know, go to PPPB Board and you folks and try to rework the whole Assessor Department. My goal would be to, and I speak for the Board, is to get someone in on a clerical basis to start learning the job. And we have someone qualified right now in that office who could start training. She'll want to retire sometime. So if we have someone in there who's willing to learn the business and train, it is a good training ground. But would... It would be wonderful if we could train them and keep them and move them up into the principal assessor position. So that's kind of our long-range plan.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Good, thank you. Okay. All right, moving on. Ed, would you like to...
And I'm actually going to offer to switch my slot with Jen, since I found out it was her birthday today. And I'd like to get her out of...
She might want to leave.
Have the ability to leave at a reasonable hour to maybe have some fun on her birthday.
Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Everybody knows.
Oh, they already sang today. I don't know. So Jennifer Day, Treasurer Collector. Let's see. So under current priorities and activities. See, we just produced and mailed the fiscal year twenty-two commitment number-one water bills last Wednesday. With the beginning of the school year, we've been busy just getting new employees in the system, signing up for benefits. New teachers, also dealing with teachers that have left from the prior school year, you know, canceling all of their benefits. And, you know, that ends up being a lot of work this time of year. Kristi and I both attended the Mass Treasurer Collector School in August. I completed my third year of treasurer courses. And Kristi did her first year of treasurer. So she seemed to like school, so I think it's, you know, something she'll continue on with and hopefully end up earning certification. And if she does, there is a master law that we could pass that would give her a five-hundred-dollar-a-year stipend for being certified as an assistant, you know, when that time comes. Also, working with auditors, answering email requests. So those are still coming in daily, requests from the auditors. You know, besides that, we've just, you know, our routine duties, collecting taxes, processing the bi-weekly payroll, printing, mailing vendor warrant checks, you know, the bank racks. And you have the whole list there in front of you, so I probably don't have to read it all off. But, yeah, also, you know, we process MLCs. And as far as MLCs go, that's... We have seen a huge increase due to the low interest rate. So we did see an increase in revenue there. You know, it's not tons of money, but it is definitely an increase. And I did recently collect another tax title account in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred, fifty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. So nineteen thousand of that was back taxes and the rest interest. And then I need to start the process of bonding for the East Street Bridge and then probably add the Greenway into that bonding, if that is the financially, like, best way to go. I don't really have any budget spending status concerns. I think I'm only at eight percent of my expense budget right now, possibly. So that's okay. As far as personnel staffing updates, I'm lucky because I do have a fully-staffed office. You know, at this time, I hired Tracy in two thousand and January. She's been a great addition to the office, and she's learning quickly, you know, how to do her duties. Kristi was promoted to Assistant Treasurer Collector around the same time. She was prior the administrative clerk, so that helps because she was able to really help Tracy with questions and whatnot, because, you know, they sit right side by side. So that works out. So she's learning the duties of the treasurer. And I figured when she's fully trained on payroll, I would, you know, show her, like, entering receipts, bank racks, because really, I mean, that person is supposed to be able to fully do the duties of the treasurer collector if I was to be out. So for the next four months, like, I guess, you know, when the new town accountant starts, the biggest thing is going to be reconciling the fiscal year with that person. So I'm sure that's going to take up a lot of time. It's probably not going to be an easy process. Also, I'm researching... I was just looking into the possibility of if we had to issue a third preliminary bill if we didn't set our tax rate on time, and how we would do that. And I guess it's something that the Board of Assessors actually requests to the Commissioner of Revenue. So, I don't know. It's just a thought of something maybe we should think about so we at least do get a tax bill out to keep our cash flow going. Also, let's see. Next four months. So in the next four months, we'll be doing the aggregate salary report. This is the report we do that goes to Hampshire County Retirement and that determines our assessment for the year. You know, and then we'll do like many other, like W2s, ACAs, the regular quarterlies. So the second preliminary tax bill we do on November first. So just a reminder to residents that they can leave payments in the drop box at the bottom of the stairs. They can pay online at townofsouthampton.org and pay at our office. I think that there's confusion to people that they don't think the building's open still. So we are opened Monday to Thursday, eight-thirty to four. And we're also... Our office is also opened every other Tuesday until six o'clock. So normally, in December, we would also be getting tax bills ready to mail and doing another water commitment. So we'll see how that goes as far as... You know, hopefully, we'll be able to do that. Long-term issues for the Select Board. So I did put in... So I did put in there to have another conversation about additional hours for the treasurer collector and the increase in salary. In the past, I was told I should do a time study. And I was wondering if there are any other options besides that. Because I just don't know if a time study would work for our office. So.
Can I ask what a time study is?
Yeah, so it's basically taking the work of an office and determining how much is at the level of the treasurer collector. Which one, what would be a level of the assistant treasurer collector? So that you're having people work at the top of their quote license or certifications. So it's basically taking the work and making sure that the level of work matches the expertise.
Okay, thank you.
So, so there was suggested tools and resources to help your job more effectively or cost effectively. I mean, I just put upgraded financial software so we are not like triple entering data. And, you know, to do an upgrade, an upgrade of payroll software could be beneficial. I mean, I did, for the first time, use Harper's payroll last week in West Hampton when doing their payroll. And it was so fast to get the payroll. I mean, it's only 60 employees compared to our like 190, but, you know, you just enter it. And then after that, Harper's files the taxes for you. They do the direct deposit. You don't have to print any checks. They complete your quarterly reports, ACA and W2. So it takes a lot of work out of the office. So, I mean, if you do that, you know, maybe there's, you know, room for, I don't know if it will cost more or not to say have Harper's or less hours in the office, but it's something we would have to look into, you know?
Harper's?
Harper's payroll, yeah. But it, I don't know. It's like user friendly and it's very efficient from what I've seen, just, I mean, it's only been one time, but. So, any questions?
No, that's good. Thank you. That's very detailed. Thank you very much. Thoughts, questions, comments?
So Jennifer, I do think the, one of the things to look at, and I understand the time study concept and that. But I also, the, the other question that I would ask, and you don't have to answer it tonight, but you asked for alternatives, is I would ask what the backlog is. Because it's one thing to say, you know, possibly you need more staff or more hours. But if your bank reconciliation, if August is done.
Okay.
There's probably not an issue there.
Yeah.
If you're still sitting in January.
Yeah.
I would be concerned.
Yeah.
I'm sitting on this side.
Okay.
Specifically in this case, as someone who's, who's done this job before.
Yeah.
How you're doing it with three people at 30 hours apiece is a mystery to me.
Yeah.
As far as.
I mean, yeah.
As far as the payroll goes, I think you look at the, there's usually a per head count, $1.50 or $4.50. Harper's charges or check writers, there's multiple things.
Correct, yes. They do charge by the.
So it, you know, if you were sitting here saying either I need an extra person or I want to outsource the payroll, to me, to me, I would go with the outsource because you also eliminate all that liability with W2s.
Yes.
And, you know, you have one error in January on your W, on your payroll and you go fast forward a year and you spend that whole year looking back to figure out what that 941 correction is. You can spend a lot of resources on that, so.
Yeah, definitely.
I just throw it out there for comments, but the, I guess the other thing is I think the, your office, and I meant to say this when, when Mrs. West was up there before too. You know, the town has before it potentially, you know, the $1.8 million in the ARPA funds. And one of the categories that that can be spent on is technology.
Mm-hmm.
So rather, I mean, in my view, what I've seen so far, and I know clarification's going to come out, this is one-time money. So technology upgrades is the perfect spot for a one-time technology. Short of just giving out, which I'm sure everybody would love, so I'll just say this for the record, taking the number of town employees and dividing the 1.8 million and giving out retro bonuses, which everybody would love.
Yes, yes, we would.
So outsourcing the payroll, paying for that, or outsourcing the imaging capability in the assessor's office. To me personally, not speaking for the rest of the board, I think those are excellent suggestions that if you haven't already done so, should probably be forwarded through the town administrator to the board for consideration of ARPA funds.
Yeah. Yeah, and even just the upgrade in software, the financial software too. I mean, Vicky and I had gone to a presentation for Vadar and what Vadar, even Vadar can do compared to what we have now would save so much time. So we unfortunately like that all stopped, you know, because we were going to look into other software companies. And obviously now, you know.
But now is potentially the time when this.
Now's the time.
One-time money has come forward.
So maybe once the new accountant's here, if, you know, because it's something they would want to look at too, you know?
Definitely. And I think as we talk about our collaborations and cost efficiency committee, too, it all ties in.
Yeah.
I think there's, there's no doubt that there's many handling, many times handling the same process.
Yeah, definitely.
That could be, you know, much more automated and endless time consuming from you right on up to the accountants.
Yes.
I'm sure. So financial software in general is something that we had talked about at the tech committee too.
Yeah.
So there's, there's things that are, these are all themes that are definitely, it's, I'm hearing it echoed, you know, over, over a couple of different scenarios, so. Good, great. Thanks, Jen.
I just want to thank you for collecting the back tax.
Yeah.
Wondering, is there anything else out there?
There's always more. Yeah, no, there is more. So, I mean, we do have two other cases right now that are in lien court. So they've been in lien court probably all, it's been a while because with COVID, it's been so slow. So I would say a good couple of years now. So we have those. And then we do have other back taxes. I actually do plan on sending letters to all of the people, the taxpayers that are leaned right now that, you know, we either need to start a payment plan or we're going to start the foreclosure proceeding.
I know it's a tough situation for people.
I know, it's not a fun situation, especially if it's, you know.
For those.
Someone's home.
Yeah.
You don't want to, but.
Well, thank you for pursuing that and getting 19,000 in back taxes and interest on top of that, so.
So it will help our free cash. Right?
There we go. All right. Thank you, Jen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, then. Ed will go interim accountant, please.
Sure. So the interim town accountant's report, under current priorities and activities. Currently working with the auditors in regards to some follow-up questions for the fiscal year 20 audit completion, much like Jen is. Will be helping train and working with the new accounting staff to complete the adjustments for journal entries for fiscal year 21 transfers where invoices were charged to the incorrect account numbers. Finishing the fiscal year 21 encumbrance entries into the budget. There are a couple of outstanding Amazon issues that have been hanging out there. And Amazon is actually very difficult to, to work with, at least their bank is. So we're attempting to resolve those. Post the last of the fiscal year 21 revenue packet into the, into the system. And one of my priorities would be suggesting to the select board to bring in an accounting vendor to help with the close of the fiscal year 21 financial books and make any adjusting entries that are necessary for fiscal year 21. Budget spending status concerns. You can scratch off the vocational tuition concern where we were $35,000 actually overcommitted. Because as of the September 10th report from Smith Vocational, we actually had four Southampton students that were anticipated to start at Smith Vocational this fall that decided not to go. So instead of being in a $35,000 deficit position at this particular time, it's still about, I think the count is, right now, if everyone attended and went through the end of the year, there would still be $39,000 approximately in there. The employment advertising line account has been slightly overspent by $100 due to the advertising for the town accountant and the assistant town accountant position. Web page maintenance has been spending at a greater rate than anticipated over the first few months of fiscal year 22. So we'll see if that slows down or continues at its current pace. Police overtime is being spent at a rate that would exceed that budget account item by the end of the year. If it continues to be spent at the current rate of spending. And that has to do with some staffing as far as full-time and part-time staff in the police department at this time. Personnel staffing updates, approval and start of the assistant town accountant, Alan Kuchek. And the target start date for that position is for September 20th. That will be in front of the PPP board, both as in emergency and a regular PCF this Thursday evening. And then we are currently in the negotiating timeframe for a contract for the town accountant Bradley Oskin. And we'll need approval for the PCF. Would recommend filing for an emergency and a, a regular PCF, depending again how the negotiations go in executive session later this evening. Target date, if everything goes well later on this evening for that start would be September 29th. Plans, events for the next four to six months. The operational budget preparation and requests, capital budget preparation and planning. Would also like to work on planning and developing a three to five-year revenue and budget plan. So we have a long-term plan in place. And also, our current agreement for the annual audit will have expired with this fiscal year 20 audit that is being completed now. The current agreement covered fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19, and fiscal year 20. Let's see, long-term issues for a select board consideration and planning. Again, I'll go back to long-term budget and revenue planning. I'll make as one of my priorities. And then suggested tools, resources to help do job more efficiently or cost effectively. And I am also recommending looking at upgrading of our financial software system so it requires less redundancy of physical data input and improves its reporting capabilities. So whether that may be done through the Compact IT grant. I don't really know if it actually fits the ARPA requirements. The technology requirements are kind of specific that are out there. But a couple of funding possibilities there for, for this particular item. And whether we actually upgrade through SoftWrite and maybe go to Springbook or look at other vendors like Vadar, that's all a possibility.
And had we budgeted anything for those kinds of things or were?
No, I mean, if, if it would, if it, we were not able to do it through like the IT Compact grant or through the ARPA funds, that would be the type of item that would be a capital request. But as we're going through grants and some other funding, you know, if it is a possibility to have it paid outside our own tax revenues, I think that would be a plus.
Yeah, I would just think the lack of clearance from the feds is a clear sign that the language and the spending capabilities around ARPA is going to loosen. Even with the guidance that came out of the White House last week that allowed the federal Department of Education to supersede the states and release funds. I, I think there's going to be room that's going to open up there. But I have one question on, on, on the police overtime. I understand that a majority of that is related to a short-term disability that was authorized. Do we not have, and I just don't know the answer to this. Do we not have a line item in the event that we have to utilize short-term disability? Or does it just come out of the wages and it's something we hope never happens and we have to deal with it when it does?
That would just come out of, of wages, but it's not just the short-term disability issue. There are a.
But a portion of the overtime is because of, there's a full-time position that currently can't be staffed. So it's being covered with overtime.
And there are other issues over there too, individuals FMLA and so forth that I won't go into details on. But you're correct, those are all filling into, the backfilling in overtime.
And to answer your question, John, that was, one of the line items in the override request was to purchase commercial insurance for short-term disability so that we weren't, the department wasn't paying the wages and then was unable to pay for substitutes to come in to cover for those people. And that, you know where that ended up, but that's, that remains a concern.
Yeah.
Whether we buy commercial insurance or we set up a line in our budget that's like a reserve for that purpose only so that departments are not impacted by that. Because if there's any excess, it would, it could roll back into free cash.
Luckily, we haven't had too many cases where we've had to use it. But when we do, it definitely impacts the department, you know, the department budget. So that's been an issue. And just back on the, with the audit contract expiring, do we, we go out to bid for that? We don't, I assume we don't just renew with the current audit firm? We, we go out to bid and select other?
Could renew with the current auditing firm. You could go out for an RFP. There's another number of options.
So then to finish off FY '21, is that something, so you said Regina had come in on the weekend. She did some of that, but it's still not complete, is what?
Not complete, correct.
So is that something the new accountant or the assistant's going to have to tackle? Or are you going to do it? Or how's that going to finish?
It'll, well, it'll either be the new accountant that has to tackle and finish that or if we bring in an, an accounting vendor, I would have them look at doing some of those.
So, so if I could, so what's the, what's the projected cost of bringing somebody in? What would be the funding source?
Yeah.
Whether that's known tonight or not. But that would be my question because I, I do think it's unfair to bring somebody into a position after the job's been vacant for 270 some odd days and ask them, not only do your current job, but make, make up for their arrears as well.
Yeah, no, I, I wouldn't necessarily disagree. I mean, I, I would like to see new people coming on that can focus on the future, current and, current and future, rather than having to go back and figure out what happened in the past. So if we can figure out an interim, you know, solution to that, whether it's a, a vendor of some sort. But I agree with John to figure out what the costing might be on that, to, to do that. Because new people getting, getting their feet wet in a new job, I would really rather have them start fresh and look, look toward the future. So as much as possible, but yeah. So maybe by, yes, go ahead, Randy.
I know that when, before we actually ended up about to hire accountant and assistant accountant, Francine, you had done some research around what these vendors do. And we found out that one of the vendors actually provides auditing services to Hampshire Regional.
Yes.
That, so I'm just wondering if we can find out within our own sort of network what type of services are available through a variety of vendors, including people that are already doing service in our own community?
Certainly.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. All right, Finance Committee, Vicky.
Bet you guys didn't miss me. Vicky Morrow, Chair of the Finance Committee. We have three members, myself as the chair, Barbara Samborsky as the vice chair, and Donna Whiteley as the clerk. We are hoping that we can, you know, try to get some other members. You know, it's, it's not easy with three people. I mean, it's easier for Donna and I because we've both been here. We've both done these jobs in this community and we're in other communities. So we know how it works and what needs to happen. But it would be nice to get a few more people, you know, on that board to fill it once, you know, once the budget season rolls around, it's, it's going to be.
How many slots do you have to fill?
There's five people, I think. So there'll be two. There's three of us. And Barbara's pretty new and she's learning, but she's, you know, still trying to get her feet wet, I guess. We've had three meetings so far. Our first meeting was via Zoom so that we could discuss and approve the end-of-year transfers. Because by state statute, you can do them between May and July. Has to be approved by the select board and the finance committee in a town. So we did those because the date was July 15th. Committee in a town. So we did those because the date was July 15th, and we wanted to make sure those were done and set. One of the suggestions that we put forth this year was that we wanted our Select Board liaison to come to the meetings and give us a report on what you folks have been talking about, to kind of keep us in the loop and up to date as to financial matters, things that need to be looked into, you know, just so we kind of have an idea of what's going on. And John was very helpful in saying, yes, he would do that, and he's definitely a wealth of knowledge, having been in municipal government before. And so that's going pretty well. You know, in that way, there's no misinformation, or you hear it through the grapevine, or you watch a meeting, and you kind of lose track of what's happening and whatnot. So, so far, our discussions and concerns have really been, you know, how the town is going to move forward. I'm not going to lie, the finances are a mess. And I get it, there's no accountant here for almost a year, but I think we need to move forward with just trying to figure out 22 with the new person. I think it's very unfair to have that person come in and say, okay, you got to figure out, knowing nothing about municipal accounting, try to figure out what happened and what didn't happen. That is a daunting task, even for someone who's been in municipal accounting. So I think our thought process was, when you hire the new person, they should pretty much learn what they can and try to focus on going forward with 22, and then figure out how you're going to untangle 21. A good resource for that new accountant, Mark Abrams, who works very closely with the Department of Revenue, has a class, which I took when I first started here. It's not cheap, but he has a class that is basics in municipal accounting. So he meets every Friday, it used to be for the whole day, and I think he's doing it Zoom now, but he is a wealth of knowledge. He knows how it works. He helped write the U-Miss manual, which is the accounting manual. But it was definitely very beneficial to learn those pieces that he was able to teach people. He goes through each, he goes through revenues, he goes through taxes, he goes through schooling, Chapter 70, he goes through it all, enterprise funds and all that. So I would definitely use, you know, look up, I can send John the link, or if you know who he is.
Yep.
That would definitely be a good place to start in terms of just getting your basics and getting your feet wet. So, like I said, our discussions have really been on trying to get, you know, how can we work together to get the financials back on track? I mean, you know, from the last report that we looked at, Donna and I could poke holes in it left and right. There was no commitments being booked, the receipts were booked, but we don't think they were being double-checked like you're supposed to per the auditors, postings aren't correct, journal entries aren't being done for processes. So I think somebody needs to make some sort of a list of what are the things that you're missing, and, you know, try to, you know, tag those off one at a time in order to close your books for 21. So we're hoping that, you know, we can get some more members and that we can, you know, work together with other town officials, whether it be the Board, the Town Administrator, the Treasure Collector, the assessors, to, you know, figure out how we can get the financials back to where they were before and move forward, and even maybe make them better than they are, so.
Okay. Great. Good. Thank you very much. Any thoughts, comments, questions? No, thank you. I really appreciate, it's good to have a Finance Committee, and even though you're short a couple members, it's good to at least have people in place. And I know we had some folks last year, and unfortunately, we lost a couple of them, too, so at least you've got Barbara that was the hangover, I guess, from last year, carryover from last year. But, you know, we definitely need to be able to work together with the Finance Committee, and we're committed to do that and get on track with all the scheduling that we need to do in terms of the budget season and so forth coming up in the fall. So, thanks for your work and stepping up to be on the committee. All right.
Madam Chair, I wonder if it makes, I know there's two spots on the Finance Committee for the failure to elect. I'm unsure if there's any more, but I wonder if there is, if we could do like consolidate email blasts through the Code Red to alert the mass, the town, that these are the positions we're looking, the folks to give an opportunity and refer them to the volunteer page.
Can we use the Code Red for that, though? I don't know.
For an email communication?
It's never, it's been held for pretty much emergency use and election town meeting notifications, but that is also by Select Board practice policy, whatever you want to call it. So, I mean, you can make up your own-
I guess I would argue-
-policy for how that is used.
I would guess, I would argue, failure to have full committees is creating an emergency distress on the finances of the town.
Yeah. Okay, we can talk about that.
I would vote in support of doing that.
Okay, let's keep that on the, on the front burner on that, so. Okay, good.
I don't know if I can comment, Chris, but I just wanted to let you know that I did put out a message on the Southampton Community Page from the Town Clerk's Office about the Finance Committee vacancies and the PPP vacancies.
Okay.
So, but maybe you'll get some interest in-
See, I'm not aware of a vacancy on the PPP B Board. Has a resignation with a what signature been received?
No.
So there is no vacancy.
There is no vacancy. Sorry about that.
Okay, no, that's helpful. Get the word out however, however we can.
And there are other committees in the same situation.
Yes, yeah.
So if we did one for all, with a short description of each of their purposes and the frequency of meetings, to give people some information that might help them decide.
Yeah, I think that that's part of the issue, is a lot of people don't know what the various committees do or how often, you know, what's the time commitment? If you step up to be on a committee, does that mean, you know, once a week, once every month? What does it mean? So I think if we can maybe just take a look at at least the key committees that are desperate for membership, we ought to be able to try and put something together and get that out, however we can do that. Okay? Great, all right. So, thank you. That takes care of our, our reports from the various departments and committees and commissions, and I really thank all of you for being here and doing that and preparing your reports ahead of time. That's really helpful. And all of the things that you're working on and suggestions you've got, we will definitely be keeping a tickler list here of things and be following through to see where things stand during the next few months. Okay? So, thanks, everybody. Thank you very much. And I think just to, where did I put it? Just to remind everybody who might or might not be watching, our next one for September 28th has got three entities that would be, that are being asked to report. One is the Capital Improvement Committee, one is the PQB, and then the Ad-Hoc Tech Committee, and that would be September 28th at 6:00. And I know, Capital Margaret, I'm going to take advantage of your being here. I know you may also be lacking some membership, but, and you probably have not even met yet, I assume. I think what would be useful for the Board is just to understand how the Capital Improvement Committee goes about looking at all the various requests that you get. You know, the kinds of questions, you know, what are your considerations when you have, you know, multiple requests for a limited amount of money? What are the things? So I think that, your focus could be a little bit perhaps different on that, but we'd look forward to that. So, thank you. All right. Good, all right. Well, I think we are actually up next to a joint meeting with the Southampton Members of the Hampshire Regional School Committee. So with that in mind, those folks can come and have a, do we have a-
We have two.
Okay.
Three, four.
Can we move a mic over on that other table, maybe, or?
Is that a quorum?
Well, it actually doesn't, wouldn't be a quorum if it's a regional school committee, right?
Right. Margaret, how many members are there at a full slate? Is it six from Southampton?
Six, we have five currently.
Okay, but you have six in normal, you've got three here tonight. Okay, they do not have a quorum, so, but that's okay. They don't need a quorum. It just means they do not need to call their meeting to order or adjourn it.
Okay. So they just need to present the situation before them, and we all, we all chip in on the vote, is that correct?
Right. And it's, you know, it's like a regular vote. It needs a motion, it needs a second, and it can be from either side. When it comes to the actual vote, it has to be a roll-call vote.
Roll-call vote, okay. All right. So with that in mind, I'll turn it over to Margaret as Chair of the Hampshire Regional School Committee.
Sure, we have our-
And work on those microphones, yeah, they're a little challenging.
There we go. Is it better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we are so pleased to have a volunteer to join us at Hampshire Regional School Committee, and that's Heather Pellegrini, who is sitting right there. So we do have an opening. We've had, we lost quite a few people over this past year. Didn't have people run. A few people did, put their names in as writing candidates, including Jerry. And so, but we still remain one short. And so Heather volunteered to take on that role for us.
Could you also introduce your other, other two folks?
Of course. This is Bill Curran, and this is Jerry.
Okay. Call your meeting to order, I think. Do they have to call their meeting to order?
It's not a-
It's not official, they don't have-
It's not a meeting.
Okay, does have to be, yeah.
Hi, Heather Pellegrini, 76 Crooked Ledge Road. Not sure if I'm supposed to speak, but I just feel really compelled to get on the school committee. I have four kids, two have gone through, two are still up at the regional. So, you know, it's near and dear to my heart to make sure that everything within our power as a school committee is being handled appropriately, and we're always looking out for the best interests of the kids and the families in our community.
Great, all right. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions? No? If not, could we have a motion to-
I'll make a motion to appoint Heather Pellegrini to the Hampshire Regional School Committee.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all right. Could we have a roll-call vote then, please?
Margaret Larson, aye. Ray Jennings, aye.
Lady Corbin, aye.
John Lumber, aye.
Francine Tishman, aye.
Maureen Groden, aye.
Joy Piper, aye.
Chris Fouls, aye. Okay. So be it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Give us a step up, Heather, all right?
Now you have four.
Good. All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Uh, yeah, we got to start.
All right.
If you want to swear in tonight, Judy will get both of you the slips tomorrow. However you want to do it.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Let's move on to the reports, and starting with the Town Administrator Report.
Seems like I just did one. All right, updates. Just to let you know, there was a pre-construction meeting for the Conant Park Pickleball Courts this morning. Was attended by Philippe Nunes and Luis Cabrero from the contractor HM Nunes &amp; Sons, Mark Reed, Ron Lauren, Randall Kemp, Bill Cannon of Cannon Landscape Architecture, Chris Fouls, and myself. The construction work will actually begin tomorrow, Wednesday, September 15th. Depending on the weather, the bulk of the major construction of the courts is expected to take two weeks. However, the surface will have to cure for up to 30 days before the surface is able to be painted. All said, the court should be ready for play towards the end of October. Our interim Town Accountant Regina Gillis, last scheduled day was September 9th, although she did come in for a few hours on Saturday to finish up a couple of things. She has offered to do some overlap training with her successors when she is available, either on Friday evenings or on a weekend day during the daytime. At this point, I am filling in as the interim Town Accountant. We do expect to be able to have the Assistant Town Accountant start next week, and the Town Accountant begin during the week after that. Chief Ian Illingsworth has received notification from the real estate agent for Marmon Keystone that the property we had inquired about next to the plant on Clark Street for our public safety complex is going on the market for $1.7 million. The Select Board has received a letter of interest from Charlie Knickie of 146 Valley Road to serve on the Public Safety Complex Committee. The Greenway Committee had scheduled the meeting for September 7th, but they did not have a quorum of members. They are interested in updating the Greenway page of the town website to provide residents with information on the Greenway project acquisition of the right of way. There were also two residents who came to the non-meeting when there wasn't a quorum, and they are interested in joining the Greenway Committee. Mike Bueller will be resigning from the committee, and I would like to take the opportunity to thank Mike for the time and efforts he has put into the project over the years. And just to let you know, the Assessor's Office hours have expanded a bit, and they are now open on Mondays from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., Tuesdays from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and also on Wednesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., while they are looking to fill the principal assessor vacancy. Upcoming Select Board meeting September 28th, and then in October, the 12th and the 26th.
Okay. Good. Anyone have any questions for Ed?
Sure.
Yeah, John?
Ed, just at some point in your free time, when you have a chance, could I get a copy of the current study on the, on the public safety building? Who's on the current committee? And how many seats are open? I see there's an interest for somebody to be appointed.
Yeah.
I just would like to get familiar with the whole background since I wasn't on the board.
I'm setting up a meeting, actually, and right now, if you go on the website for the town, it's still listed as an acting, active committee. They just haven't met in a long time. So Dawn Warren was Chair, Ian Illingsworth, Chief Workman, Charlie Knickie.
Technically, I believe is still listed as in the middle. I don't know if that's accurate, Lucy, but he's listed on the website, because I'm reaching out to all of them. I don't have Dawn Warren's contact information, so I didn't know if you had that.
I've got Dawn Warren.
So I'm setting up a meeting.
Is the last proposal on the website, so I could, I could look at what that was with the pricing?
I have a copy of it, because we use it from the grant committee. I've got the copy of the PowerPoint or whatever it was that was presented at a town meeting, like, probably three years ago, maybe, something like that.
Oh, longer than that.
Or than that, or.
Yeah, before the proposal that went to the town meeting for actual, behind the fire station?
Yes, yeah.
The one that was like the million-dollar price tag or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have much more than that.
Just so I could get familiar with the whole thing.
Yeah, I've got that PowerPoint. I don't have a lot of the other supporting document, but I do have that. I can forward to anybody that would like that.
Yeah, I would like a copy. Also, I'm looking at the, at the website now, and it looks like everyone's term was completed. So they all have to be appointed again?
They have to be reappointed, all of them.
Okay, whoever's interested.
Yep, okay. So what I was planning on doing is inviting a number of people, including some people that might not necessarily be on the committee, but just casting a little bit of a net, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed on where have we been up till now, where are we currently, and what's happened. Because in my experience, and I haven't been a liaison to the committee at all, but the pendulum has swung back and forth from renovate existing buildings, create a new safety complex, look for different lands, you know, like renovate the existing buildings. So I think, I just want to bring everybody up to speed and then see who's interested in being on the committee. So I would certainly let people know when the date is, and then anybody can invite anybody to come.
Great, thank you.
Ed?
Joy, you've got it open, so you've got an advantage on me. Is, are there dates there, or are they all until completed?
No, they all just say completion.
That's right. They're appointed until the completion of the committee, so their terms are still valid.
Okay.
And it's, I think, I've recently reached out to the folks that are currently on there. If anybody else wants me to reach out to anybody else, just to inform them, I just thought Bill Barkum, some of that comes to mind, and I saw Charlie Knickie's name was already act him on there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe, I remember Charlie resigning, so.
Mm-hmm, I believe he did, yeah. Okay, but his name is still up there on the website?
It's the front page, it hasn't changed.
Okay. Okay. And I think back on the, on the Marmon Keystone thing, this is something, when the Grants Committee was looking into, if you remember me talking about the one-stop grant, that was a new government, a state grant that you could apply for a variety of things in theoretically some sort of expedited way, we had looked into that about the public safety complex as one of the potential projects and sent in a letter of interest. However, we got an answer back saying, no, they weren't, they weren't interested in us with public safety complex. So that avenue got shut down. But in part of that process, both John and Ian had volunteered to go talk to the folks at Marmon Keystone, and so this is finally now, a couple months later, coming back with some real, real numbers, which, million seven, I'm not sure how many acres that is, but that's, that's a chunk of change, obviously. So, yeah. Tammy?
Tammy Malunas, did you mention, oh, excuse me, Rini, did you say something about the Greenway Committee getting together?
No, they already did.
I did.
Okay, you did.
I did.
Okay.
They didn't have a quorum.
They didn't have a quorum, but they got together, yes.
Thank you.
And actually, those webpages have been updated. So, Lucy, if you've read an update for the Public Safety Complex, would you send it to me, please?
So all of what we used to send us?
All the ones you sent may have been updated.
I'm there.
Yeah. And maybe there's one more on there to do. If we didn't do it, it's just the liaisons to the committees from the Select Board. That would be another one to update, but that's great. Okay, so, great to see that that will be getting started again. I think we have to keep on pursuing that and figure out where our biggest challenges are in terms of the, the place to locate it. I think we have to keep on pursuing that and figure out where our biggest challenges are in terms of the place to locate it, that's the issue, I think, for one. And whether it's something new, something renovated, something expanded, heaven knows what. And I think that's it for the town administrator report. Who would like to go on their select board reports first?
I'll start.
Okay.
So April West gave the update from the assessor's office, so I won't say anything more about that. They've been working very hard to cover the work of the office, and I have to give them tremendous amount of credit with their knowledge. She mentioned two new people, but they seem to be tremendously experienced, so grateful for that. The Community Preservation Committee met, and it was basically reviewing different projects, the Pickleball Courts, Clark Chapman House, Manham Meadows. There was a representative from the housing, and so we discussed the various activities of the housing committee, and also, of course, the housing plan that's, the event that's planned. Because there is a pot of money in the CPC that does involve housing, so they're working very closely now to try to really access some of those funds for the benefit of the residents. But the majority of the committee was focused on information. We had two speakers from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission who came to speak about this canal project. So it's really, really interesting, actually. So basically, the short story is that the CPC voted in favor of putting in front of the voters, I think, Tammy, do you remember the amount, was it like $15,000?
For which one?
For the canal project from Historical. I don't have the minutes, but it's basically around that amount. But anyway, it's going to go in front of the voters, and it's basically to do an archaeological mapping of the canals. And I'm just going to read something to you, that the canal, which goes from New Haven, Connecticut to North Hampton, was, they broke ground on the canal in 1825, and it was fully completed in 1835. And it was basically to allow, you know, ships and whatever to come in to the areas and have, you know, changes in the height. So what happened was, the entire route was converted into a rail trail back in 1847. The Rail Trail Company also went bankrupt, and then most of the length of the canal turned into bicycle path. So what we're talking about in terms of the CPC funds from Historical is, right now, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is spearheading the effort to put the Hampshire and Hampden Canal on the National Register of Historic Places. The Hampshire and Hampden Canal is the Massachusetts section of what was once the 86-mile-long 19th-century canal that spanned from North Hampton to New Haven. So they're using a particular technique to actually digital map and do some archaeological studies of the entire canal. So that's why it's coming from Historical, and that's the price tag, and that's when it go in front of the voters. So there'll be a lot more education for the voters around their support for this project, but anyway, that was the major activity of the CPC committee. And then, and they're meeting again on October 6th. And then the Council on Aging met, and they basically, there's $3,500 remaining from CARES grant, so they're discussing about what would be helpful. The Grab and Go Meal Program that they got from previous CARES was extremely successful, a lot of people took advantage of that. We also talked about possibly making it available to help pay for rent or, you know, housing for some people. So anyway, they're talking about what opportunities there might be, grocery, possibly gift cards or whatever for seniors. And then a lot of the focus is on this program that they're planning, the Memory Cafe. There was a grant that was written, and we haven't heard about it, that you're aware of, right Chris?
I have not heard yet, no.
But anyway, they're going ahead and planning a Memory Cafe, and this is, it's several operating in Western Mass. So they're visiting places like the Aron Brook, and also Golden Minutes, which is a place in North Hampton, adult day health program. And so they're basically planning a program that's called a Memory Cafe. And they're also looking into the possibility of having an opportunity to show movies. Apparently, it's extremely expensive, so if you do it somewhat regionally, it can be, you can get some savings for that if we combine our efforts. And I think that's about it.
You have to pay a certain licensing fee to show it anywhere except a library, I think.
Right, $600 a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
So that would be such a fun thing to have a movie event in town. So anyway, they're kind of looking into that.
Very good.
Tammy Malunas, I know the Norris School had a license, they had to do the 600 so that they could do movies at the school. Do you need multiple ones?
That's a good question.
Don't know.
Because we, you know, the town's already basically paid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good to know, well, check that out.
Okay.
Who's spearheaded the idea?
I'll pass that along to Joan, she's the one that's been looking into it.
Yeah, okay.
Because that could be a combined effort.
Mm-hmm. Could be.
And the only other thing is about the public safety complex, I'll be putting together a meeting hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
So then the Greenway, I'm sorry, not the Greenway, CPC, you said, is meeting October 6th?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the senior COA will meet the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
At 4:00.
So maybe, one of the things we had talked about with the Greenway was whether or not we were going to use the debt exclusion, or whether we were going to go to CPC for money for that in exchange, and so we need to be thinking about maybe how we get that before CPC on the October meeting, perhaps.
Yeah.
So, okay, good to know. All right, how about one to my right over here, anybody? Francine?
I'll go. All right, the Board of Health met on September 7th, the Chair of the Norris School Committee, John Lumber, and the Superintendent joined the meeting. As everyone knows, school opened on September 1st, Mass are required in the school, and that matter will be reviewed at the state level by October 1st. They reported that 92% to 94% of the Norris school personnel are vaccinated. They discussed the need for mask breaks for both students and teachers. The contact tracing consultant was present and described the process, and is in close communication with the school nursing staff at Norris to keep track of school cases. Reports are provided monthly to the Board of Health regarding all known and cooperating active and exposed cases here in town. As of September 2nd, and I checked the report for November, or for September 8th, and there has been no change. Southampton continues to have 15 active cases as we speak. It also shows that according to the state records, over 4,000 Southampton residents have been fully vaccinated. We are going to wait for further data, the, we, I mean, the Board of Health will wait for further data before deciding whether or not to require masks in all public indoor spaces similar to the policy adopted by East Hampton and North Hampton. They just want to wait for more data to see if it's, if it may or may not be necessary to do so. And two businesses violated the tobacco sales and were fined. Then on September 8th, the Pioneer Valley Planning Committee, as I think most people know, Southampton joined a consortium of small towns to examine the feasibility of a regional human resource resource for towns like us. We met for the second time via Zoom with partner towns that include West Hampton, Chester, Goshen, Gateway School District, and Southampton to review and discuss a request for proposals from an HR organization, because human resources management is outside of the purview or the expertise of anyone at PVC at this time. So they're going to issue an independent consultant to come in, who will then meet with designated people in each of these towns and gather information about the human resource concerns and considerations. The goal of the final product here, it will be a report on the feasibility of us sharing human resources across multiple towns, and also a plan of what those services are going to be and be put in place for us. And so we won't expect, you know, everyone wants things, yesterday, myself included, this is going to take several months to get through this process, but hopefully, we'll have a good product at the end of that, and one, you know, and I'm sorry, April wasn't here to hear this, to know that we are moving on this, and hopefully, we'll have it resolved. All right, the next meeting was on September, of the bylaws committee was on September 8th. We reviewed the draft of dog and dog kennel bylaw. It was then forwarded to the Annoal Inspector for comment. The bulk of the meeting, we discussed the upcoming public meeting scheduled for September 21st to gather comments and feedback on several draft bylaws, including soliciting, canvassing, nuisance, and peace and quiet, and building numbering. And I just want to remind everyone that that meeting will be held next Tuesday, September 21st, at 6:30 here in the conference room. We're looking for public comment on the documents that are posted on the town website, the three bylaws that I mentioned. So what we will be doing is, any comments we receive via email, we'll be sharing those with people in the audience, as well as receiving comments from people in attendance. We will be joined, the bylaw committee members will be joined by the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief, simply because those folks had a significant amount of input into the drafting of those bylaws in terms of the conditions that they had hoped to have addressed by the town, so that we finally have, you know, a uniform plan that everyone can follow. So please don't forget, next Tuesday at 6:30 right here. And then, another meeting, I'm sorry to go on like this, there was a Norris School Committee meeting on September 8th. Mask wearing, as you know, is no longer a local option, is required by DESI. The latest DESI policy said it will reconsider the policy as of October 1st, and requires an 80% vaccination rate before they'll consider changing the policy. The school personnel and all the students at the beginning of school, it was reported, everyone is following the safety protocols, and the school personnel are conducting routine safety checks on a daily basis. Enrollment in Norris this year is 474 students, with 46 of them being school choice. There are 17 new staff, and then some good news, it's not final yet, but the IT Director submitted an emergency connectivity grant application for $167,000 to improve technology by providing mobile hotspots with unlimited data for students in the district who lack access to high speed. And that's not just Southampton, it's the entire Hampshire Regional School District, but Southampton areas will benefit from that. And then finally, the business manager distributed the FY 21-year-end report and transfers. The next meeting, I'm sorry. I've been busy, okay. The next, it was on September 9th, the Zoning Board of Appeals. This was a continuation of a previous meeting to discuss the variance for a property on Palmory Meadow Road. The applicant withdrew the request at this time. The ZBA then went on to review the criteria for an online zoning bylaw service that the town will now have available to us. And then finally, my last meeting, and it's not as a liaison, but as invited person, was with the Library Trustees on September 10th. We met to discuss their concerns about fiscal year '22 appropriation that does not meet the state municipal appropriation requirement of town libraries. Since the override didn't pass, the library is approximately $10,000 short of this requirement. The Library Trustees will request the opportunity to make a presentation to the select board at one of our meetings in October to present its plan to address this serious deficit. If we don't resolve this situation, there will be significant reductions in the types of services currently provided to library patrons. And that's it, I'm finished, thank you.
Good. Thank you Francine. Hopefully have a more restful week coming up. Weeker too.
Francine, can I just ask you a question? The IT Director, the funding is for what source did they apply to?
They applied to the Emergency Connectivity Grant.
Oh, I wonder who's funding that?
I don't, I.
It's the Governor's Office.
Is it state?
It's out of the Governor's Office.
Okay, out of the Governor's Office.
Okay, good, because that sounds like, you know, American Rescue Funds too, actually. Okay. Thanks. Okay, John, can you go next?
Sure. I attended a lot of meetings, but I only have one to report on in this capacity. So the PPP is meeting this Thursday, and their schedule is the third Thursday, so nothing to report on that one. I don't have a date for the next Capitol Committee meeting, so no update from there. And Finance has set a regular schedule of the fourth Monday of the month, so that hasn't come up since our last session. However, Hampshire Regional School Committee did meet on the 7th of September in a special meeting to discuss the DESI guidelines that came out prior to, or the day after Hampshire Regional met last time, and it echoes what Francine has reported on Norris about the masking.
Okay. Great. Okay, thanks. Joy?
Yes. Okay, so I'll start with Conservation Commission, they did not meet these past two weeks due to the holiday, but I did touch base with their Chair. They just have the usual permitting going on. They do need volunteers to help with the trail cleanup, whether it's to remove fallen branches or trees, or to cut back vegetation. Every time there's a storm, or rain, or just harsh winds, there's branches that are coming down, and we have some serious invasives growing near the trail, so those need to be cut back. So we're looking for volunteers, as always, and if you are interested in volunteering, please email concom@townofsouthampton.org, and their next meeting is September 20th at 6:00 p.m. on Zoom. The Planning Board also did not meet last week. Their next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, September 15th, here in the Town Hall at 7:00 p.m. They, we are interviewing, or they are interviewing their new consultant tomorrow, and the priority for the Planning Board is to update the bylaws and hopefully have something for spring town meeting for the town to vote on. Open Space did meet on September 2nd, they're currently on the search for a permanent, oh, we discussed the assessor and that needing to be in place. There's lots of good work being done with Kestrel. Kestrel has identified Southampton as a town to be, do more active conservation in. That means they are going to be building and supporting the Open Space Committee, and looking at doing a landscape partnership project, which is actually a federal project, and trying to identify about five, we need about 500 acres to accomplish this project. It's a big project, so the Open Space Committee definitely has their work cut out for them looking at that, but Kestrel's willing to support. They've, they're prioritizing Southampton, which is amazing. So we're looking at properties in town that could be part of that project. Their next meeting is, they're having a meeting this week that is on the town government, but that's in regards to a landowner and a rep from Kestrel Land Trust in doing an agreement for conservation. But their actual Open Space meeting is September 30th at 6:00 p.m. Housing Authority met last night, there's lots of good things happening. There is the September 22nd community meeting regarding the housing production plan, that is via Zoom at 6:30. Flyer and access is posted on the town page at townofsouthampton.org, and on the Southampton Facebook pages. We also discussed the flyer for rental assistance, we, there actually had been one distributed, so we just pushed that out again. I just want to remind the public that the, there, the Supreme Court ended the moratorium on evictions, so if you really do need housing funds, Southampton does have access to those funds. Please feel free to reach out to the Housing Authority or Select Board, we can, we can help you. And I've been going around posting those flyers at the post office wherever we can, because I know that people may find themselves stuck in a situation that we can help them with that. And there was a big discussion in regards to prioritizing establishing a housing trust. And then after we've, we've finished with the housing production plan, in order to institute that, we're going to need a housing trust. So we're really going to take that on this year. And just to remind everyone to come to the community meeting on September 22nd.
Yeah, that's great, the Housing Trust as well, I mean, I think that's something that really requires a lot of pushing from Select Board. I think we have to be a, kind of a leader in that whole process, so.
Absolutely.
I know they've got their hands full right now with the production plan, but that would be great to.
Yeah, and I.
Make some headway on that.
I definitely told them that I would, I would take the Housing Trust on and look in, more into it myself, because I know that they're going to need that, and that's, that's something that Select Board needs to push for them. So that is, that is on my agenda.
Yeah, no, I think in terms of how it gets structured, we have to be very involved in that.
Absolutely.
And is the presentation on the website, the one that we listened to, that was really well done? Remember, we had a Zoom meeting?
I think.
Maybe that can be publicized, that it's available. Maybe that can be publicized, that it's available, I'm sure it's on video.
Yeah.
I can ask.
Do you remember?
I know they did send me documents from it.
Yes, Jim Senney had set up the speaker to come in. It was really very informative.
Yep, good. Okay, anybody have any questions for each other here? Everybody all set? All right. I'll jump in for a few minutes on the grant situation. Let's see. So the ad hoc grant committee has been meeting and just trying to keep track of any, any grants that are upcoming. At this point in time, we're waiting to help the tech committee, if they want our help on this Community Compact IT Grant, which I'll talk about in a minute. We had been looking into something you may have seen advertised, I believe it was in the newspaper at one point, put out by the Massachusetts Foundation for Humanities. And it was basically a traveling Smithsonian exhibit, sort of the Smithsonian comes to rural Massachusetts kind of thing. And they were looking for six towns to host this exhibit, which sounded quite interesting. It was really, the topic was, you know, change in a rural community. It was like, my gosh, this, this kind of fits a little bit of Southampton. And so we took that on to try and explore more about it. This is something that wouldn't start for a year, but you have to put in a letter of interest now. And the main thing is, they send you these, it's a pre, I guess I would say a canned exhibit, if you will. It comes in these big shipment container type things, and you have to have a space to arrange this exhibit. So it takes a huge space requirement, and that has been our downfall. It had to be, you know, certain door height, appropriate number, amount of square footage, et cetera. And we spent some time talking to the library folks, and as much as they were interested in it, certainly there's no space at the library. We talked to the Council on Aging, and Ed paced out the COA room, and not enough room there either for what was required. It's at least 750 square feet that was needed. We asked about whether we could go down the hallway and use part of this room as well, and the answer from them was no. The church was incredibly interested, they've got huge space over there, can't use the church. Long story short, we pretty much gave up on that one. It's a great idea, but we'll keep our eyes out. I don't, I think this is maybe the first time that this has happened, this, this Mass Foundation for the Humanities. So it sounds like maybe that's something that will be beginning to be more frequent, I don't know, but we'll keep our eyes open. But it just, unfortunately, I think doesn't, doesn't fit. They, they really want like a community center or a museum or someplace like that is where they would normally hope, you know, have these things situated. And it's like, but if you want it in rural, small-town Massachusetts, most of us don't have those facilities. So it's, it's kind of a catch-22 here in terms of their maybe not being realistic about what we can host as well. So anyway, that was time spent, but not going anywhere.
I just have a comment on it, because we talked about that in open space as well. And the due date for that was September 21st for the letter of interest?
Yeah, 24th, maybe, something like that, yeah.
And they were asking if the school was an option?
Well, I think, I mean, we did not actually approach the school because we figured, too, with all of, they're working on with a cafeteria and, and all the spaces are, I would assume anyway, and maybe it's a wrong assumption, but I just, I did not reach out to the school just because I believe their spaces are pretty well used in terms of the distancing that they have to have. And, you know, there's, it's, it takes up six weeks. I mean, it's, it's a huge, it's not like a short time. And that would be probably a, a big drain unless you had a more open place that wasn't, you know, always occupied.
Or if it was during the summertime?
It, no, it's, it's a wide variety of dates. But, and we even checked about, you know, could we rent a commercial space? We've got empty commercial space in town. Nope, that doesn't work either. So we tried all sorts of ideas and-
What about the old meeting room of the Old Town Hall? Is that currently used?
Well, how do you get upstairs, though?
Oh, so it's not unique, accessible? There's an elevator.
The door sizes don't fit.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, right.
Too short on that.
People can get in there, but not the exhibit.
Yeah, the things can't get in there, so, yeah, it just, it ended up not being useful. So that was a thought. The Mass Trails Grant opens again soon, but since we currently have three Mass Trails Grants, we are not planning on applying for anything from them. Our next focus is really probably going to be on the Brick and the MVP Program Grants that are due, they're somewhere around December, January, and those would be more like hazard mitigation and climate resilience kinds of topics. So we've got a couple of months to probably think about those and see what makes sense on that. In your packets, however, the tech committee has met, and we've got two or three things brewing there, with a Community Compact IT Grant. And that is one that we can qualify for up to $200,000, and the application time is September 15th to October 15th. We've actually applied for it in the past and gotten a very small chunk of money, less than $10,000, I believe, for our firewall and a few things like that. You can only have one project, and so it's, you know, trying to figure out where the priorities are. And from the tech committee, they're really looking at cybersecurity, cybersecurity assessment because if something hacked into our town system here and we go down, we're, we're down and out. We really don't have a whole lot of protection in, in terms of what's required these days for cybersecurity and defending ourselves against hackers, et cetera. So that's one idea, anyway, that is being talked about, and they're hoping to put in an application for that. In order to do that, however, I'm tying in a couple of different things here. They, in spite of all the tech committee's expertise, nobody feels like they're really the cybersecurity person. So we have reached out, actually, there is the PVPC, again, PVPC Municipal IT Collaborative. And I've reached out to them and we had initial, I had initial meeting and then brought it to the tech committee. And so the, this municipal IT collaborative started about four years ago through PVPC. It combines several towns, Blandford, Plainfield, Chester, Russell, Huntington, and Middlefield. And basically, they are kind of a cross-regional, whatever, cross-town municipal resource for various towns. They have put together, through a competitive process, they had selected what they call a preferred vendor, preferred IT vendor. And they did that about three years ago, and that is a group called Novus Insight out of Hartford that is their IT vendor. And they are able to do assessments of your IT system, they can help with help desk stuff, they've got a wide variety of tasks that they can do, obviously for a fee, that you'd have to, you know, play for, plan for, rather. But they are also able to help us do some initial planning and maybe help us with the specking out of the Community Compact IT Grant, because part of that would require a budget and timeline. And so these folks, I think, are going to be, hopefully even coming out to take a look at our IT system over the next week or so. And Kim Florick from the school is going to be also honchoing part of that because she's on the tech committee. And so she's going to be one of the folks meeting with them to understand what, what's possible. But the IT collaborative itself, it's something the tech committee is going to take up at their next meeting, but they are recommending, and you've got in your packet, an MOU here, draft MOU. This would be something that the town, we would have to sign if we wanted to join in on it. It's a big $400 a year for our size community, and it just seems like it would be something that would be advantageous for us to try and take advantage of. So we won't necessarily talk about it more this evening, but the tech committee was going to make a recommendation to us after they explored it a little bit more. And so probably the next meeting, I'll bring it back again and see if we want to join in on that. I think we can still have the services of this Novus Insight company to help us with this IT assessment quickly before we actually become a real member. Because part of the problem is, we've got to apply for this Community Compact in the next month, if we're going to do that. So anyway, that's, that's one of the big topics that they're looking at. And looking like it could be a good possibility for us, something we should definitely try to do. You can only apply for it every other year, so in that sense, we qualify for it. So that's, that's a good thing. The other two things related to the Community Compact, again, there's a couple of things in your packet, just talking about what a Community Compact is. And it's basically this voluntary mutual agreement with the state to try to implement a best practice or two. Each community can choose two best practices, and again, you can't have done it the previous year, you have to skip the year. And there are a wide variety of categories, from transportation to energy, to human resources, to whatever. What I did was just copy out here, the financial management practice one and the IT one. There's, the, the beginning narrative is kind of the same, but you'll see the best practices for financial management. So, for example, establish a budget document that details all revenues and expenditures, describes priorities and challenges, offers clear policies to residents and businesses, develop a long-range planning forecasting model that assesses implications of your, your proposed policies and programs, prepare a capital improvement plan, et cetera. IT ones would be assessment of the IT system, cybersecurity, shared resources with other, other communities, more strategic planning for IT infrastructure, et cetera. So there's a lot of things here that seem like they fall into the bailiwick of the discussions we've been having. And when I contacted the folks at the, at the state office, they recommended that if we were interested in applying for the best practices one, we should do it pretty soon. It actually opened up about three weeks ago, and it's a rolling application, so it's nothing that you have to, there's no real deadline, it's a rolling application, but it's there until the money runs out. So what happens is, you say you're going to do best practice X and best practice Y. You have two years to work with them on developing that. They help provide some technical assistance and consultants to help you do that process. And from what I'm understanding, this is what we actually used way back when in 2016, 17, perhaps, when we did the Jacob Study, I believe. That was, that was kind of through this Community Compact best practice notion. So we haven't applied for one for a while, so this is something I would recommend that we think about doing, and if we thought that something from IT and one from finance might be possibilities, that we, we actually work on, on doing that. And again, you know, we might need more, more time to figure out which ones we want to do out of this list here, so we could put it back on for next week. But I would just recommend that we don't delay too long if we think it's worthwhile for us, because I think we could get some, some mileage out of this and, you know, could help us move forward. So I don't know, if anybody has any thoughts about that? That's a whole lot of spiel on things, but any initial thoughts?
I agree, that was a lot. But the, I guess to narrow it down, I'm, I'm going to assume the answer's no, that currently the town's insurance is probably purchased through Maya, and we do not have an active cyber policy.
They have a cyber policy.
The town has a cyber policy.
Through Maya, correct.
Well, then if it hasn't been done yet, and if it has, I'd love to see it. But if it hasn't been done yet, because you have that policy through Maya, whoever that's written with Travelers or wherever it is, that carrier will come in and do a threat assessment itself, which should give us a impartial roadmap to start with versus going directly to this consultant, who whatever their recommendations are, we're going to contract with them to do it.
The only, the only thing about that, I hear you, I did not know about this insurance policy. The only thing about this is that they will come in and do the assessment, but you do not have to hire them to do-
Yeah.
-any of the implementation. I mean, they're, they're fine to, you know, not be hired on to do the project itself, but there's definitely upgrades and things that have to happen.
I agree 100%. I just think it's another, we're already paying for that cyber policy. So one of the benefits of that cyber policy is the free threat assessments, which should be done at least every three years, and I'm sure Maya as well.
Okay, that's new to me. So I guess maybe, Ed, if you could make that available to the tech committee then, because I'm not aware of it, so.
Yeah, I'll find out about it.
Yeah, because they, they did not mention it to me either, so that was the idea on that one, but.
It's just another source of data.
Yeah, sure. Yep.
I'm just wondering, Ed, if you have any thoughts about this? You're on the tech committee and you're also, you know, you know, finance team head. I'm just wondering if you have any suggestions? You wrote the original, two years ago, compact cluster, I'll say. Is there anything that jumps out at you?
The one that jumps out at me in financial management is both, we talked about it a little bit earlier tonight, and I know John's brought it up before. I'd be interested in the middle one, which is develop and utilize a long-range planning forecasting model. On the IT side...
At some point-
The IT assessments, if we can get anywhere, I'd be back interested in, depending on what Maya actually provides and have, we have available to us, the cybersecurity piece. Or, and my second one there would probably be the next one, the strategic planning, review technology organizational structure, spending, and business goals.
Yeah. I think one of the things that they had said, and I don't see it listed here, and that was one of the questions I had put out to the, the folks at the program, was that it might be possible to use this as a website update as well. And if that were the case, that might be useful, but I don't see it listed here, though.
Actually, jumping on something John brought up earlier, while I'm not convinced that ARPA funds may be available and, you know, utilized just for the financial software application, I'm pretty well convinced at this point in time, because the website, we do post information on COVID, that I'm pretty convinced at this point that we could at least use the ARPA funds for a website update.
That would be great, yeah. Okay. Good, okay. So anyway, so there's things like that, and certainly the financial systems, financial software upgrades, some are, I mean, I think all three of these things, you know, kind of came up as, as high priorities in terms of, you know, cybersecurity, the financial software, as well as website. So on, on those things, wherever they fit. And if they don't fit in the best practice one, then, you know, maybe, you know, we don't have to choose two, we can only choose, we can choose one if you wanted to. But the recommendation was just to not delay too long, because when the money runs out, it's out. So they will help you for a while, but if you-
The one that stuck out for me was the one where they reviewed the organizational, the technology organizational structure and helps us determine the strategy to prioritize our technology investments. I mean, you know, we have different departments working on, or did have, on different systems. How do we all, you know, get on the same page at the same time with, with the right equipment?
Mm-hmm.
And become more efficient with the organizational structure, as we talked about this financial software. I mean, the fact that people have to enter the same information three, four times.
Right.
The likelihood of making, you know, transpositions and all of that, as they're doing it, it just makes the error rate go up.
Yep.
We had one system that would, one time, everybody accessed the same information. I think we'd be much more accurate and, and much more efficient.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But I'll also follow up on the possibility of ARPA funds for the financial software, because as of last Friday, I wasn't convinced that we could use ARPA funds for redoing the website and-
Yeah.
Little research and whatever, and, yeah, so.
No, that's-
Maybe do a little research on the financial software and then come to the same conclusion.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, so I think, you know, at this point in time, we can, you know, if your preference would be just to, to wait until next time or, you know, make any recommendations, but we have both the IT collaborative, which would be to join that, and that would be a $400 commitment for the year. And then whether we wanted to do one of the best practices or two of them or not, if we are not ready to think about which ones yet, if we want to decide at the next meeting, we certainly could, so.
My only, well, not my only question, but my immediate question was, and I know there's no comma in the numbers, normally I don't worry about it, but where would the $400 come from?
I think we have some in technology services, even though we didn't actually budget such like that, but I would think we have some.
Yeah, there's currently $11,000 there. Just means that, you know, spend $400 there, you won't spend it somewhere else, but there is money available through that, that account.
I'm sorry, but, but, but I assume that $11,000 was placed in there because we had X number of projects that equated to the $11,000.
Correct, and we may be taking some of those X number of-
I'll be Peter to pay Paul.
It's moving them to grants, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, ready?
So I wanted to ask, if people have done talking about the Compact Grant, I wanted to ask you about something you previously said about the BRIC grant. So that was one that came out when we were talking about the Municipal Vulnerability Perilous Grant and all the work that was done with that. And so the BRIC grant is actually building resilient infrastructure in communities. And I was just, I wanted to go back to what we had talked about at that time, that we currently have a hazard mitigation plan that expires, correct?
Expires in December.
In December.
December.
Correct.
And can the funds for this BRIC go into creating or updating our hazard mitigation plan?
Either, either the BRIC or the MVP program, one I think is what I had thought when I read it, but one of the others, one of the two, I think, could be eligible, that could be eligible.
I think the BRIC will come up before the MVP does that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, so we'll have to take a look.
Is that a plan? So is that a plan? Or the hope is that we would apply for this BRIC grant to actually update our hazard mitigation?
We definitely need to update it. It's a five, I believe it's a five-year plan, and it needs to be updated. It expires in December, and so rather than have something expire, if we can get ahead of it, yeah. I'd have to double check on the dates on the application, but it's somewhere around December, January, that these, both of these come up, so. Yep, those, that was one of the topics that we thought would be likely to put in for the grant.
Okay. And then one other question, when we were doing all the work on the workshops on the hazard mitigation program, how we identified risk areas, and it was a really good collaborative of looking at the entire town and vulnerable things. And I think the recent rain that we had exposed also some flooding areas, Riverdale Street in particular comes to mind. What is the next step in terms of planning a project involving MVP?
Next step will be the official acceptance of the date that we are an MVP community, and then we would be able to actually apply for the grants that are generated out of that.
Okay, so are we on track to be designated as a MVP community?
Everything's been filed with the state, so yes, we're just waiting for, in fact, earlier in the meeting, I had made a note to follow up and see where that was, so.
Okay. And then there'd be a window of, what, the spring to go ahead and apply for projects? Or once we're designated as an MVP community, then we can apply for a project?
Yes, and I believe it is the springtime. I'll have to check on that, but I believe the applications are out in the spring.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. So anyway, I'm not hearing that we want to move forward with anything with the community compact tonight. We can put it back on for next meeting, and you have time to think about it more?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
Does the finance committee weigh in on that at all?
No, they haven't met.
This is the first, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah. No, and, no. Okay, moving on then. Thank you for that. I think that's all we have for reports. Ed, old business, the accountant position update and the assistant accountant, I think you've told us a little bit, but if you want anything more to be said there?
I think we've covered it. We're going to be in executive session later this evening with Bradley Oxon to negotiate that contract, and hopefully we'll be able to come to a conclusion with that tonight, approve it, sign it, and like I say, Bradley will have to give notice, but our target is for him to start in about two weeks.
Okay, very good. All right. And we'll get to the assistant accountants through the PCFs, and we're hoping on the 20th, so next Monday on that one.
Correct. That is the target start date for Ellen for that position.
Great, okay. All right. How about then the audit update? I keep hearing about queries from the auditors, so where are we with this?
Yeah, they sent both Jenna and myself a number of questions to be responded to, and we're both working at finishing those off and getting them back to them, so.
All right. Do we have a clue when they might finish their report based on that? I mean, we had talked about having them come and present the draft report to us. Is that still a likelihood of...
I mean, they'll still come and present the draft report to us, it's just a question of, okay, is this the last set of questions, or are some other ones going to follow up? But, you know, our goal is to get them the responses, and hopefully that this is the end of it, and get them those responses by, you know.
What kinds of things are they looking for? Are there things that are...
Oh, they're looking for explanation of variances, and sometimes information on contracts or awards. The questions that I've been asked are mostly on, you know, variances, whether they're in the budget or the enterprise funds at this point in time.
Okay. Okay, well, hopefully that goes well. We'll, we'll keep them going. We definitely, we had hoped to have them present a draft to us at the end of September meeting. I'm not sure that's really going to happen. I guess we'll have to play it by ear over the next week, but certainly by the beginning of October.
Yeah, we'll see what happens, and I'll let you know.
We definitely need to know where we are with that, yeah.
Ed, could you remind me, because I forget, what was the date of the extension for Moody's?
I believe it was next week.
Okay. So, okay, anything else? All right. The Route 10 bridge update, what I mean?
And most of the major construction is done. The water department is in the process of actually scheduling a meeting with their engineering firm to go back through everything in that corridor and to make a punch list of anything that still needs to be taken care of or wasn't taken care of, so they can present it to the contractor and get them back out here to finish any of those items that are still hanging.
Okay. Yeah, I've seen a couple of comments about people saying that they had still not had their driveway and/or their lawn kind of restored, repaired from wherever the equipment had been sitting or something. So I assume that would be something that might be folded into that?
Yeah, all of those pieces would be folded into that, correct.
Okay. All right, so folks, whoever's concerned, stay tuned.
So is the, is the pipe currently functioning?
Yes. That part is working, so.
Great, okay. East Street Bridge?
East Street Bridge, they are in the process of placing all the submittals to VHB for their approval. Currently trying to get a, the contractor has picked their environmental consultant, which is Tianban, and I'm trying to get the package from MIG so that I can send it along to the Conservation Commission, so that they can review that on their meeting Monday night, and because one of the pieces of the order conditions is that they do have to improve the environmental consultant. There are a couple of other items they have to do, but their meeting's pretty well packed. And in my mind, if they're going to split it up, the environmental consultant is the most important to get the approval of at this point, because they do have to work with the agency, like National Heritage and whatever, on the turtle and mussel issue. So we really need to get that moving forward. But there's another couple of pieces that, as part of the order conditions, the Conservation Commission will have to approve before the project starts, so those other couple of pieces will probably be on the October 4th Conservation Commission meeting.
Okay. But part of this will tie into their meeting on Monday, the 20th, huh?
Yes.
So when's the bridge going to start, would you say? When are they going to close one? I mean, they're closing the whole thing, right?
Yeah, and that will start when, the first thing they'll do is they'll demolish it, so, yeah, it'll be, it'll be closed at that point in time. I expect that probably sometime around early October, we're going to see the drill rigging company out there, working for Hoyol Gas and Electric, to do the horizontal boring, boring under the river area to take the gas line off the bridge and put it under the river. You know, and once that's done, it'll be hooked back up, and it'll never have to go back on the bridge. Some of the other pieces out there, the yearly construction pieces is, they will have to disconnect the current water main that's on the bridge and take that off. But yes, the first part of this is the demolition of the bridge, so those roads will get closed, and we'll have a detour fairly quickly. And I don't, at this point, I'm expect we'll see that maybe mid to late October.
Has there already been a plan for, you know, for emergencies for the residents that live? Like, is there already sort of a mapped out plan?
There is not yet. We will, we will have a pre-construction meeting when everything's in place and the schedule's already laid out to go over the detour and the alternates by the police and the fire, so we can notify everybody.
Any other questions, comments?
One's bridge is done before the other one starts?
Yeah, really. Exactly. Okay, all right. Moving on, I think we are at the new business.
Finally, Lauren.
Thank you for being patient here. This is the parent request for late enrollment to Smith, Smith-Vogue, for a student named Frank Fornier, right? So we have a request from Frankie himself, his folks, and a couple of the teachers, I believe. But as you mentioned, they were not able to come tonight, or the parents were not able to come, so you're going to be talking on their behalf, is that right? So please, come on up.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me. So I did speak with Frankie's mom about this, so just so you know, we talked about what I was, what she was comfortable with me sharing and what she wasn't. So I've known Frankie for two years. My first year working at Hampshire, he was at an out-of-district placement. And then last year, he came back to Hampshire. He has made a ton of progress, and they just felt like it was really important for him to really focus on academics and to make a lot of progress, particularly with reading and some other needs that he has, before applying out to Smith-Vogue. And so I felt like that was important information for you to have, to know why he's applying so late as a 10th grader, after 10th grade has already started. But it was a pretty conscious decision on their part to make sure that he could make academic progress before going to Smith, where it's just a very different structure. So Frankie's a great kid, like I said, lots of progress. We'd love to have him stay at Hampshire, but I do think he would be a perfect fit at Smith-Vogue. And I know it comes at a cost to the town, but we would support that move for him if that were to work out.
And his late arrival does not put him at a further disadvantage in terms of going to Vogue at this time?
That would really be up to Smith-Vogue to decide what shops are available. I don't think, I think if you were to approve him to go, he wouldn't automatically get in there. There could still be a waiting list, but this would be the first step there. But I don't know what shops would be available at this point for him.
Don't they do a general, like, rotation through the different ones, or do they go in there at a particular selection?
Do that freshman year.
Freshman year.
They do a rotating thing?
Freshmen do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now, when school starts, the first two weeks are academics for freshmen and juniors. And then they start the rotation of all 15 shops. And they'll do five, and then they'll do academics, do five more, academics, five more. After they've done all of them, they are given the option at that point to pick four of them, that they will then do a full week in. And after that, they, they list their, their top, and then the teachers all get together and they discuss, how did they perform in all the classes? Do they have the desire to be at this school? Do they have the work ethic and the attendance policies down and understand them? And there are some kids that have come to Smith-Vogue as sophomores, but elected to come in as freshmen and be freshmen instead, so that they could try every single shop and have that full experience of going in. When they come in later, and if a student decides to switch shops, there's, there's a huge learning curve there, because some of them have already started doing their tier testing for their licenses, and it's a little bit of a catch-up. But if the student is dedicated to that shop, they can do it. And the teachers will be there to support them 100%.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay. Yeah? Okay, anybody else? Margaret, Lauren anymore? No. All right. Yeah, and it looked like, from what I gathered, he was particularly interested in forestry? Is that what I understood? So.
And can you remind us, the per pupils, per year is, it's like 18,000?
18,679.
18,679.
And we got a, at first, when we had this request, we'd, well, we'd hoped to have it on the agenda last meeting, but we had such a packed agenda last meeting, we pushed it to this one, and then unfortunately, the folks, parents could not show up tonight. But it looks like we have 54 students from Southampton at Smith-Vogue and one at Westfield-Vogue, from what I'm reading here.
That is correct. That was confirmed as of September 10th.
Yeah, so at about 18,679 per student. So that, you should have that.
Yep.
Right.
If it applies.
If it applies.
If it applies, correct.
And if they get them out of Sped, it's returned back to the town.
And what, Vogue transportation is separate, though, a separate line item, right?
Right, that's a separate thing, yeah. So at this point in time, whereas we thought we might not have the money to be able to do this, we actually do seem to have the money to do this, even though we had, we had trimmed down the budget at our budget time, guesstimating a certain number of students, and by four of them not showing up, I gather, that has created a space at least for, for this one to be able to be considered. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. At budget time, we had reduced the request by, I can't remember exactly, it was either nine or 10 students. And as of a week ago, but don't forget, as of a week ago, we were working off the August 15th list, and school really hadn't started as of yet. It showed four more students on it, and we were actually $35,000 in deficit, so when we got the updated list, which was confirmed on September 10th, four more students had, who were anticipated to start at Smith as freshmen, had decided not to go. So we went from $35,000 deficit, basically to $39,000, still looking good in that account, so there is money available.
Reenie, the one thing that I did not mention is after the, the students have gone through all of the five, the four weeks, and they are told in December during the break which shop they want to, that they were elected to go into, they, every student still has the opportunity at that point to go back to their home. If, if they, they get into a shop and they're not happy, you know, it was their fourth choice, they have the option to come back. So then the town does get reimbursed that money again.
Does that happen very often?
There's, there's been a few students that have done it, and once they've gone through junior, sophomore year, or, excuse me, freshman sophomore year, junior year had decided, no, I'm going back to Hampshire, and then realized, no, I'm, it's not working out, I need to go back. So there are students that have flipped, but there, there's some that, when they don't get into their first, second, or third, it's, maybe I should stay back at Hampshire.
Yeah.
Or whatever school that they came from.
Now, while you're up there, if I heard you correctly, you mentioned the, the scheduling of the shops for freshmen and juniors?
Correct. The, it's on a, every other rotation. So the first two weeks of school, only freshmen and juniors were at the school for academics.
Okay.
If they were a sophomore or a senior on shop, seniors, a lot of them are on co-op. They never even went to school for the first two weeks. They stayed working at their jobs.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm just wondering, because this one would be a sophomore, if I'm understanding correctly, and so he'd be entering in the sophomore class. So I was just wondering if he was already, you know, behind quite a bit and would have to do some catch-up. So that would be just any thought, Lauren, on that? Do you have any concerns about that? I'm going to turn it over to Lauren.
I think he would have some catch-up to do. I think he, if he were to get into Smo, into Smith-Vogue, he would be eager and willing to do whatever it takes. So I think it would definitely take some work, but I, I think it would be worth it to him.
Okay, all right, yeah. Good. Okay, well, thanks. Well, I think we have all the information we know at this point, yes, John?
So the only, the, well, first, as a graduate of a trade school, I'm all in favor of sending all kids to trade school, versus general high school. When they want to do it, let's do it. But secondly, I would just be, from my years of experience on the Norris Board, we're approaching a deadline here. October 1st, there's an assessment coming down the road. So I'm all in favor of this, I just would like it dated today, so that as of October 1st, this gentleman is not on the Hampshire Regional High School rolls. I understand the whole waitlist issue, but if... I understand the whole waitlist issue, but if October 1st, he's at Hampshire Regional, he doesn't get into Smith until October 2nd, we're going to be paying twice for him. We're going to be paying on the assessment, because they go by the October 1st. So, I would, I say that by ways of, I would encourage us not to delay this. If we're going to vote in favor of doing it.
That was going to be my question. I mean, given all that we've heard, plus what we've read, even though we don't have the parents here in person tonight, we've had people speak on his behalf, are we comfortable moving forward with a vote on?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right. All right. With that in mind, can we have a vote, please? Either way, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That was quick and easy, after two hours of waiting, it took all of 10 minutes, so...
Can I just ask a question about vocational transportation? Lauren, I don't know that you need to say with this, I was just curious. So, we pay for vocational transportation, they come pick up the kids at Norris, right? They take a bus to Norris, and then they go from Norris right to Smith-Vogue?
Correct.
We pay by what, by pupil, or by bus?
By bus.
A bus.
We pay by bus, and it's part of our current contract with the busing company?
Correct.
We, when we decided to allow the student to go to Westfield-Vogue, was because they have an airplane maintenance, or some kind of a program that's not offered at Smith?
Right.
And at the time, we were paying a lot of money for their transportation, and we were going to make a note to remember it, because they were going to shortly become driving age. Is that something that's being stayed on top of, do you know? Yeah, the school. Like, I don't want to pay for transportation if the kid's driving to school.
So, I can speak to the Westfield-Vogue piece. We do have a couple of students there, and we have hired a couple of our own van drivers, and so we have worked really hard to make sure that we can transport those kids without having to pay vanpool, or without having to pay a transportation company. So, right now, we're able to do it in-house, because of the low numbers there.
So, they are using the van service from the school?
Yes.
It's not like they're driving, we just forgot about that, we're still paying it?
That's great. And actually, according to the list, anyway, the student is in 9th grade at Westfield-Vogue, so...
He's not driving.
So, probably not driving.
Hopefully not, yes.
Hopefully not.
Yeah, well, you never know. Okay, good, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Margaret.
That is unanimous, he may attend Smith-Vogue. All right. All right, moving on to a bit of a COVID update, I'm going to turn it over to Ed. Anything new to mention here on COVID?
No, I will say that the numbers are still slowly rising, and the hospitalizations are rising. In general.
Well, I'm glad that, you know, the Board of Health is going to be kind of watching what's happening and, you know, figuring out whether they want to modify their position. I've had two or three citizens reach out to me, just saying, hey, look, I'm not comfortable even shopping in Southampton now, because, you know, when I go to some of the stores, people are not even wearing masks, and people are going to East Hampton, where the masks are required, at, you know, the grocery store. So, it's something I think we have to be mindful of, and just keep on monitoring our own situation, and figure out what's best for Southampton, so...
It's constantly changing, I'm seeing, you know, more and more communities starting to invoke mask mandates, and not just for the school systems, but in general.
Yep, okay. All right, anything more on CARES and American Rescue Act? Anything to add on either of those?
No, only, there is more information starting to come out on the American Rescue Act, which is good, and that's, you know, kind of where I found the information concerning the website development. And yes, most of it does seem to be aimed towards technology, but in a lot of cases, shall we say, remote technology. So, I will keep on top of that and see how that changes.
We had talked about maybe having a meeting with the Water Commission folks to see what they might have online for any water projects that might qualify, too?
Sure.
So, I think we ought to, maybe next week, in between meetings, we could set up a meeting with them, maybe, and during the day sometime, and see what their plans are anyway, and get ready for something. If something comes down the line, we know what's out there. And then, just back on...
I have not received the map from Comcast as of yet, so...
Okay. Yeah, that was another question, okay. And then, under the CARES thing...
Excuse me, not Comcast, that's who I have for service, but Spectrum.
Yeah, right, Spectrum, right. Under CARES, too, I think Randall was one of the last ones to receive a huge bit of equipment, is that coming soon? I know he was waiting on his generator, was that it, or something?
No, I believe he's got the generator, he's waiting on the, I believe, the propane tank and the actual hookup for it.
Okay. All right, so all the big items that we'd originally planned for, sound like they've come in, at least, there's nothing else hanging out there, so... Yep, all right, good. All right, well, let's talk about, what do we have in front of us here? The revenue and expenditures for '21, is that what we have, or the...
No, you've got the...
It's '22, isn't it?
This is a '22, yeah.
Yeah.
This is the first one for '22.
So, okay, the packet is the expense account from July 1 to September 8?
September 8, correct.
Okay, and so that should, so it's really for '22, not for '21 on our, on our, on our agenda, is that right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right, so you want to tell us a little bit about these, in terms of how much is in here and what's missing, and...
Basically, this has, does have, other than the encumbrance, it's got all the operating budget, items entered, the articles, CPC allotments, capital allotments. What it does not have brought over as of yet would be any of the revolving funds, or gift funds, or grants.
And then eventually, what we'll have is, because there would be, yeah, so there would be the list of, like, a lot of the CPC projects that are ongoing, it's not just the new ones, right, that have been, this reflects the new ones that would have been approved...
Correct.
Through town meeting, but there's still, old ones that are still on the books, right?
Exactly.
That would be, have to be entered in, okay.
Right, and then, for like, for revolving funds and grants, we'll have to go back and verify the end of fiscal year '21 balance, and bring that into the beginning balance of fiscal year '22.
Right.
And I believe you mentioned in your report, or one of the reports you gave tonight, about the 2021 revenue?
Yes, there is one piece that is left for the fiscal year '21 revenue. We have created the new accounts that were needed for that, so they just have to be actually entered into that packet and confirmed, so it can be posted, and that will finish off the fiscal year '21 revenue piece.
So, with that, if, and that's something you'll end up doing, most likely, I gather?
I will have to do the posting once it's confirmed, correct.
But then, after that, is what we were talking about, about possibly needing to bring in some entity to take a look and sort of verify the books and double-check everything for fiscal '21?
Right, and take a look at any journal entries that may need to be done, or any corrections.
Things that were charged to the wrong account, or things like that?
Exactly, and then go through, like Vicki was saying, you know, commitments where, you know, weren't entered during fiscal year '21, and some other things, so we'll have them do that, too.
So, with that in mind, do we want to move forward on contacting one of these firms that Francine had researched, and see if they're available to help us out? How do we, how do we kind of do a couple of things simultaneously here?
Well, let me make, what I'll do is make a list of items that we're requiring, and I'll reach out to the two firms that Francine didn't contact.
Okay, I'll give you the name. Melanson, again, Melanson, just simply might be a conflict of interest because of the audit, so that leaves us with the only other firm, which is Kinsheriff, and I'll give you that number.
Right.
Okay.
But I'll get, I'll get an estimate from both of them.
Yeah, I think we should, and just, you know, I think most of us seem to be in agreement that we'd like to, you know, have somebody else kind of come in and clean up or look at what happened last year, given the interim natures that we've had, and let the new people hopefully move forward with fiscal '22. And not have to scratch their head on that.
I agree 100%, but I have reservations about those individual firms. Not collectively, but I have reservations about maybe one of them.
Okay, well, let's see what we hear from first, and then we'll have a discussion on that probably next meeting.
And if you have a recommendation on another one, why don't you pass it along to Ed?
Do you know of another firm, offhand, that would...
Not offhand, but I'm sure I could reach out to the association.
You've worked with from the school or anything? No, not necessarily.
I can say this, I think of the world of Melanson Heath. So, if we just don't renew their contract for a year, that could solve that. But the expenses for the prior year, Ed, have they all made it into the system, or is that still a work in progress?
The expenses are all in. There are some transfers that still need to be done for fiscal year '21, but all the expenses are in.
Okay. And is that a relatively new development, like, maybe within the past few weeks? Did Regina finish that up on her way out?
All the expenses?
Yeah, getting them into the, posting them to the system, not being in the queue.
I would say that there hasn't been any changes to that in, I would say, at least three weeks.
Three weeks, okay.
That's probably been done.
All right, so I can follow up separately, but I do know that that was holding up bank reconciliations from happening.
Okay.
So, you know, that's part of the whole process, too, to get forward all the way up to June.
Okay. All right, so you'll reach out and let us know for the next meeting what options we might have to bring in somebody to help out?
Sure.
What it might cost, all right. Okay, any other comments about revenue and expenditures, either fiscal year '21, '22? Yes, John?
I know, you don't want me to talk.
I opened the door.
Just a couple of quick observations, and I know we can't go into the detail tonight, and it's really not fair to put Ed on the spot, but it's interesting to note that police equipment maintenance has already spent 84% of their budget, and we're only eight weeks into it, so potentially could be a contract issue?
It is.
Okay.
It's much like software support, which is front-loaded, so...
Some of these are front-loaded costs, yeah.
Under miscellaneous expenses, our retirement contribution is underspent by $16,000, and I'm assuming that's because we paid it in full on July 1st and got the 10% discount. So, I would just point that out to the board, that we should budget for that, and not build that fluff into it for later. And the same thing on the workers' comp. It is possible that there's an audit coming down, and that's why that $2,500 is in there, but if we went back six months ago, that's an extra $18,000 that could have been used somewhere else.
There's an audit coming up, and we also have to pay deductibles.
So, that explains the $2,500, but the $16,000 potentially could have fully funded the library, so they're not looking for the 10 grand. Not saying that's where it would have gone, but I'm just pointing it out for when we get to the...
Where are you seeing that, John?
Page 3, bottom, miscellaneous expenses. So, the retirement contribution, I know it's true in Hampden County, but I'm assuming it's the same in Hampshire, that if you pay on the 1st of the month, 1st of the fiscal year, you get an X percent discount. So, we should budget for that number and not the full number.
Good point.
That's all.
Okay, no, good observations, thank you.
I'm done.
That would have plugged the hole, yes.
That's okay, very good, all right. Okay, moving on, a couple more topics we're getting through. Let's talk a little bit about this, our new ad hoc committee idea. We may want to change the name of this thing, but right now, we had called it Ad hoc Collaborations and Cost Efficiency Alternative Committee. In last meeting, we had charged Francine and Joy to kind of write up a brief description of what the committee was all about, why we wanted it, what it was going to do, how it might proceed, how it would be organized, so that we could reach out, especially to the town residents. For people listening, we have a committee of about 12, and we were hoping to get three town residents with experience, relevant experience in financial management, HR, or other financial operations background. And so, we had thought about how to let people know that this is there, and what they might be signing up for. So, Francine and Joy, you took a stab at writing up something, I don't know how you'd like to...
Francine took a stab at writing it?
Yeah, with some input, thank you, Chris, and really, yeah. Everyone has it in their packet, it's just simply a description of the purpose of this committee, some of the areas that we want to address, in terms of cost savings, developing more efficient systems, collaborations, outsourcing if needed, any way that we can look at our financial situation and figure out ways to do the same or more for less. That's where we're headed. So, we need to involve, obviously, it's not just the Select Board and other board committee members, but the employees themselves, because many will have some ideas about how we might be able to do things differently...
Sure.
That will be more efficient. So, that was, that was, had to do with the composition of the group. We, you know, we have to get on stronger financial footing, we have to develop longer-term plans, we have to have a way to the future. We're always like, looking back instead of looking forward, and I'm hoping, not that this is going to be a miracle worker, but, you know, it will put a plan in place, a group in place, to start moving the town in the right direction, so that we are much more financially solvent, and able to do more of the things that we want to do and that people want to have done in town. So, this is it. You know, we're open to any comments, corrections, suggestions about how this thing would operate. We assume that it would be 12 people, they would meet at least monthly, they would report to the Select Board on their progress every other month. That's the plan, that's the plan that we have. And the fact that we're involved in a couple of initiatives that are maybe collaborations with other towns, you know, is opening the door for shared services and so on and so forth, as we look to, to that being one way of us achieving part of this objective.
Well, and some of the smaller efforts at regionalization, like the IT collaborative, for example, I mean, that's, there are things kind of, kind of coming all at the same time. I mean, the topic is very, very timely, I think.
Yes, it is.
Because I think there's a lot of things out there that we could take advantage of, sources and resources that we might not have...
I don't think the situation is unique to Southampton.
No, no, not at all.
And for small towns, I mean, we need to have, I mean, the world and our workforce is calling for greater improvements. And we, it's not always something we can just pass along the cost to, without really exercising some effort to reduce expenses in some ways, so that we can spend it in other ways.
Right. Anybody have some questions and thoughts about this?
I did do a little tweaking here to, you know, eliminate a couple of the run-on sentences that were in there, that I did because I was trying to get it down to one page, so I was trying to cram as much as I could into one or two sentences, so I do have another version, slightly tweaked.
God, you did a great job.
So, we looked at, what's in here is the criteria that would be looked at, so any suggestions that come about, and I think we talked about it a bit last, last meeting, that this would not be a, what do I want to say? People in the committee would not be ones saying, well, this is what I need to do, it's rather coming with ideas about how we can maximize our services to the town residents, how we can do better efficiency-wise and cost-wise, and certainly to enhance our competitiveness, as we heard from our reports early on tonight, and long-term fiscal stability. So, those are all the overarching goals for the committee, and trying to apply some criteria, the level of cost savings, service delivery improvement and timeliness, improve public access to services, feasibility to implement, that's one, and potential impact, either negative or positive. So, I think any ideas that would come forth from the committee would be passed through the Civ of these five, at least these five, criteria, if you will, to say, okay, how is this, how does this shake out? If you evaluate some idea about doing something differently, you know, what does it really look like when we get down to that? So, I'm thinking this could generate some very interesting, interesting discussions. So, in terms of what's being proposed, we've got 12 members. Shall I go ahead and just read these out?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so we've got, let's see, two Select Board members who will provide committee leadership, three town employees slash board members, with one person representing each of the following groups, and these were divided into cluster groups. Group 1, assessor, accountant, treasurer, collector, library trustees. Group 2, building commissioner, town clerk, water commission, council on aging board. Group 3, police, fire, highway, and Board of Health. And then, three board members represent... And then, three board members representing, one from finance, one from Norris, and one from the planning board. And then, three town residents with experience in financial management, human resources, and the town administrator. So that's kind of what is being proposed. The idea, obviously, the, you know, the folks from Norris, finance, planning, would all recommend, select, appoint, designate, I guess designate's the right word, designate who they would like to be on the committee. The, what we had intended for the town employees and the clustering of groups was that whoever is, because this is already a 12-member committee, which is going to be a challenge in its own right, but that whoever is chosen out of group one, two, or three, they would be responsible for going back to the other parts of their cluster, if you will, to bring forth to the meeting ideas and suggestions, et cetera. That's kind of the idea. But those committees would self-select. They would meet and self-select their, or designate their representative. Ed, question?
Yes, I believe you actually corrected that in your email of September 12th.
There was, no, I, this, that was an earlier email. So I had, I had a different configuration and this is what's being proposed.
Okay.
So, I had, I had, I was trying to, I had four groups at one point in time and then I reduced it to three and then I had a different configuration there. So as long as we've got everybody represented, I think it's fine. But if anybody has any thoughts about the groupings, that's...
Just clear, so under the three board committee members, so that'd be one from within finance, one from within Norris, and one from within planning.
Right.
So Norris School, is that the school or the local school committee?
School.
That would make the decision?
These are board and committee members. So it would be from the committee.
From the committee, so just know, just knowing that committee? And I don't think it needs to be said here, but if the school committee, if the local school committee decided, for example, we thought Bobby Jones, the business administrator, would be the best person to put forward, as long as that's the committee's appointment, coming from within Norris, that would be acceptable? Or would you anticipate it being one of the five elected people of the committee? Or would you leave that up to the committee to decide?
I think, I guess I would leave it up to the committee myself. I don't know, is there any reason to think that it has to be necessary?
It might even be the building principal.
That just focuses just on the business side of things.
So it might be the building principal, or...
Might be better. I mean, you're looking at all aspects of it. How the operations might be done differently. The insight might come better from the school principal, the assistant principal, you know.
But not necessarily one of the five committee members?
Now that you're mentioning that, yes.
That's a good point.
But I'm not so sure it's the business manager.
No.
Right now, it says three board committee members.
Yeah, so what would this be then, if it was just...
School representatives from... Or appointed by.
Or designated.
Right, because finance is a three-person board right now. They may have somebody else who's really interested in this just can't serve on the finance board. And if they want that to be their, the person that's their voice, almost like their liaison.
I guess we were, well, I was thinking, which I hadn't thought about the school idea. I think that's a good idea. I guess I was assuming somebody actually from the planning board and from the finance committee when I originally put this out there.
And that's, and then, so I'm happy either way. I'm just kind of looking for clarification on my side.
Yeah.
And then, it's not here, but just knowing how things operate sometimes, I think the paragraph above that where it says the committee of 12 members will hold monthly public deliberations, that we somehow insert some wording in there without creating a third line that says, "To be recorded and made available for online viewing." So we're constantly keeping the public up to speed every week or whatever if they want to go back and look at it.
Sure.
That was included in the original draft.
Yeah.
And some of the committees do not record and they're not required to. So I think that people that want to step up to this have to understand that it's going to be recorded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it may or may not be, well, yeah, depending on how and when the committee gets together and when they meet, whether it would be a Zoom meeting or whether it would be an in-person meeting. I mean, that could be another, might be another challenge to try and have in-person meetings, I don't know, for 12 people.
But I think the more we can get the word out there and let people watch it on their own and then they can provide feedback.
Sure. So back on the school, if we, if we said what we have here is three board slash committee members representing finance and planning, but then we would say, "And designated by Norris?"
So, I get, when I see Norris School, I think you're talking about administration within the school. If you were talking about school committee, then I would say local school committee. Because that's the, that's the, that's the real title of the five-member board. The Norris School is the building principal down.
I just think for everyone else, they're either an employee or they're appointed, or they're elected, or something. So I think we just have to be a little bit, maybe more narrower.
Right, and we can say from a local school committee. And then that means it's got to be one of the five.
No, I'm just, I'm fine with it being like somebody who's a school employee, but I don't think we should just leave it like whoever they vote. I think we have to say that it has to be a school official or a school employee or a committee member or something. I just think the rest of it seems pretty specific.
All appointments will be confirmed by the select board?
Right.
So do we want to add in Norris School Committee? Or do you want to add?
Local, local school committee.
Local.
Local school committee.
Appointing.
Designate. Yeah, good, good, yep.
Okay. And I think, yeah, designate, okay. And then I think all of these, we, I think we had said, maybe that dropped off. But the idea was that we were going to be bringing them forth and approving them at select board, I believe, right?
So, yeah, we'll have to squeeze it in. I can make the typeface smaller.
Margins, yeah.
You can also justify it, so then it, at least...
Yeah, no, I'm kidding you.
Yeah, we can fit it in, I'm sure.
Well, yes, we'll get there.
We can get it sized for a six and a half typeface.
Well, you can fit it in, we'll fit it in. So I think we're, we're pretty close to done. And what was said here, that anybody interested in serving on this, and this is really focusing on especially those three public members, right? Should send a letter of interest by October 12th to the select board detailing the background, reasons for wanting to be part of it, and their availability to serve on this committee for at least a year. Is that going to scare anybody away? For at least a year? I don't know.
Alright, so it's a, for one year.
It's pretty realistic.
Yeah, I think it is too, but I just don't, you don't remember how people say it. And then, letters of interest should be sent to the board of selectmen of town. Can we change that someday to Select Board at Town of Southampton?
Well, as you've got it, that's the, an incorrect address anyway. It's selectmen, it's not board of.
Selectmen?
Yeah.
Selectmen at, why don't we just change it to Select Board? Whenever they come in to do something with our IT system, could they please change the address?
Someday we can do that, yeah. Yeah, that's fine. So, okay, or mail it in, okay, either way.
Yeah.
So, a letter of interest by October 12th. Well, I guess it depends on how soon we can get this out.
Well, I can, these changes are...
Yeah.
...miniscule, we'll post it.
One more thing to post on our famous website, which I know is taking up our, our money from our website consultant person, right? Posting all these long things that we've had lately.
I know.
But I think they're all important and need to be out there. We can maybe ask Robert to help us out.
Can we send it to the chairs of each committee?
The committees?
Committee chairs. And then all the other groups that we've designated and ask them to get started on it.
Well, and, yeah, the committees...
And each department head.
I was going to say, I mean, when Ed's got a department head meeting, this could be handed out at the department head meeting, right?
Okay.
So that would take care of the town employees. Library trustees, I'm sure we could get it to them. Council on Aging Board and...
Robert couldn't, yep.
Yeah, I mean, I...
The only suggestion I have is if we are getting this, if we're distributing this out to the public and trying to get public volunteers, we should put in boldface on top, "Be part of the solution and opportunity to serve." Otherwise, I think, just reading this Ad Hoc Collaborations and Cost Efficiency Alternatives Committee thing, people's eyes will glaze over and not realize that it's actually like a call to serve.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
So are you suggesting just the header part or that whole paragraph?
Not the whole paragraph, just maybe the header part and then just underneath, and then...
Be part of the solution?
Yeah, "To apply," maybe at the bottom.
Yeah.
And, but, yeah, something in bold on top to catch people's eye.
Alright, and do we want to change the name of this crazy committee to something that we can all pronounce?
About crazy committee?
I don't know. Financial, I don't know, instead of Cost Efficiency Alternatives?
Save our tone?
Okay, guys, we're getting punchy and it's only 8:30 here. Well, if anybody has a suggestion...
To Joy's point there, I think, I think when this is finalized, then we can write up a, I like the header that she's talking about. But then a quick little, one paragraph with exactly what we need from the public and we give that with this to the reporter from the reminder. And we get it out in the paper, kind of write their story for them.
Yeah, the reminder's been pretty good about getting stuff out, even when we haven't asked them to do it, they found us, I think so.
Or just Cost Efficiency Ad Hoc Committee.
Yeah, just get rid of the collaborations part?
Yep, Cost Efficiency Ad Hoc.
Good. Sounds good to me. Cost Efficiency Ad Hoc Committee, okay, so be it.
Yay.
Alright.
Good.
Good, so you're going to work on tidying up these little changes?
Yep.
And then we'll get it posted, and I guess...
I'll run it by you just to make sure that I captured everything.
Alright. Should we post it on the, on the homepage? That's where I guess people look most, don't they? I don't know if they go look for volunteer opportunities. I know there's a separate...
Everyone loves to do that because it's easily defined. You're not supposed to be posting all this stuff on the homepage. They're supposed to be going through it.
Should be on the volunteer page or something?
Yeah, exactly. Like I say, we can put a little link, a small link there to get them there, but, yeah.
Okay. I know, because that homepage gets really full of stuff. So, okay, good, guys, thank you for that. I think that's a good start and let's keep our fingers crossed that we can actually move forward on this. It sounds good. Alright, next one, where are we at? Yes, actually, election worker PCFs, Lucy Dalton. Yes, thank you for waiting, here we are.
Okay, so I'm just going to touch base on the questions from the PCFs from the August 24th, which I did ask Ed to remove the PCFs from this, tonight's meeting for signatures. The Board of Registars and I met last week and we did discuss that some of the procedures were not being done correctly. The reason is because I was going by what I knew. The procedure is the selectmen are required to notify the chairman of the town party committees by April 15th that they may submit list of party members by June 1st for the appointment of the election officers. If that's not done by a certain date between July 15th and August 15th, well, the selectmen submit the names to the committees. The selectmen are required to notify the committee chairs to submit list of party members. Then the registrars submit the names to the select board. If that's not done, then if the select board fails to make the appointments by August 15th, the registrars shall appoint the election officers from the list of party members submitted by the party committees. If no list was submitted, the registrars may appoint any qualified registered voters. So, I don't want to go in the past, but in the past, this is what has been done. The lists were not submitted. No lists have been submitted in the past five years.
But this year, we appointed the election officers.
This year.
This year, I thought we were doing it right.
This year's the first year, yes. But the last time it was done correct, appointees were done was in August of 2018. In August of 2015, only the PCFs for increases were approved, but the appointments weren't made. So, there's some, there was some law in the process. So the Board of Registars and I have been meeting since August of 2020. The Acts of 2020 came into place last year and we were able to hire poll workers based on their qualifying, whether they were qualified to work, whether we thought they were qualified to work. But the lists weren't sent to the select board to appoint those, so the Board of Registars chose those workers. We've only, I've only been following this practice because that's what I was known to do. I was never given any notes. I was not given any basis on how to do the procedure. We obtained a publication from the Secretary of the Commonwealth, which is the booklet of boards and registrars and election commissions, and it contains the procedures that is supposed to be followed. So, in some sense, we were doing it correctly because I am a member of the Board of Registars. So, it says that, you know, we can choose the, to hire who we feel is qualified if the select board doesn't appoint them. So, so this year, yes, it's been done correctly. Moving forward, the Board of Registars is going to look closely at the applicants that have been nominated by the town committees and those that are interested in becoming poll workers. The poll workers should be evenly split between the two major political parties, which they have been. The Board of Registars will also be looking at rotating workers between elections and town meetings. So the same workers are not always the same. The poll workers, including the warden, are all one-year positions. Going back to the warden, the warden that has been working for the over 20 years has been Virginia Huntley. I don't know if I can mention, mention names, but she has had the most experience and was always willing to work. She had a private health matter, so Eileen Hamel stepped in as a warden in, in her absence. Eileen has also worked as a poll worker, not during the same, she has not done warden, been the warden the same time as Virginia. So, just to clear that up. So that's how the process works. Moving forward, we're going to make sure that everything is done correctly. And just to also touch base on the other question about the person that is also a poll worker, the same person that was the warden in Virginia's absence, that person, regardless of her political party, is married to a police officer and anyone who is a public safety worker, their family members are not listed on the street list. So that's why she was not on the street list.
So do we, how many wardens do we need? Because what we had seen were two, two requests for wardens.
So, there's, there is one warden, but I, there's a deputy warden, so that was why there was two. Because if one warden can't work, then the second one could be called.
Okay.
But the question came up, were two of the same political affiliation?
Right.
Yeah, that was the question.
So, I mean, that was just, they were willing to work. So, not knowing the procedure as well as I did, as I should have, that's why they were asked to be wardens, so.
Well, there's a meticulous process which starts with getting names from different parties.
Exactly.
So I think that we're doing much better.
Yes. Yes.
The registrars, the clerk office, and the select board are following the process. So it seems with all the current voting rights and everything else going on, I think that it should be split between the two parties, regardless of someone's history of wanting to work.
Exactly, but I do have to say, that if I call someone and they say, "I can only work this many hours, I don't want nights, blah, blah, blah," I have to, we have, in the past, we would look at, or the town clerks were looking at, the people who could work. So in the past, the, and I'm not throwing people under the bus, but if the former town clerks weren't following the procedure, then that's what was happening, and I was following that procedure.
But the question is, when people sign on to be an election worker, they should know that that requires evenings, you know, all days, some days.
Well, we didn't have an application process.
Not that they can say to you, "I can't work."
Well, we didn't have an application process until this year.
To go forward.
So, we've never had anything like that, nothing.
Back, back on the warden though, if you've got somebody in mind already for the, the warden position, then, I'm hearing anyway, the question is, should the deputy warden be of the opposite party?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So when they have resubmitted, that'll be the case?
So we're going to, that's why we took the PCFs back.
Okay.
And I also wanted to just clarify with, you know, Maureen, that the person that came to you and spoke to you, that said that they were not asked, I spoke with her at the November election, she worked at the September election. She did not seem upset at all when she asked me why I didn't call her, and I said, "I, I had enough workers." We, we didn't have a checkout table, and we didn't have to have the checkout table, we had the option to not have it.
Lucy, what I'm looking for is assurances that there'll be a systematic fair process for asking.
There will be a fair process, yes, it's, it's always been a fair process.
That's, I think that was.
But in the past.
Some people were called, and some people weren't, so then the next time around, the people that weren't called will be called the next time. All I'm looking for is a fair process.
And I did tell you that, moving forward.
It's gonna be a rotating process.
We will be rotating.
Okay, good, that's all I'm looking for.
Okay.
No, that'd be good. So from whatever we have from town meeting, or the election, that, you know, we rotate the, the crew that works, basically, I think that's.
And I, I do want to comment, though, and also, and, I'm, I'm, that when you spoke, Maureen, you sounded partisan. I mean, the political parties are all on public record, but you did sound very partisan last week, last.
Well, I'm just saying that both wardens were Republican, and that there's been attempt this time to actually do it, that's the only thing I said that had to do with parties.
Your comment said, your comment was, "I didn't like that, I don't like that."
Didn't like what? I don't like the fact, I'll say it again, I don't like the fact that both wardens were Republican.
Okay.
I wouldn't have liked it if both wardens were Democrats.
Right.
So that was the partisan part of it.
Yeah, the point is, we wanted to make sure that there was a process.
Okay, so the process starts with the select board.
Both parties are equally represented, that's the main thing.
The process starts with the select board.
Starts with Ed reaching out to the party chairs.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay.
So if, if Ed doesn't reach out, then.
Well, we've, we've done this year.
The whole process changes, so this year, it's.
We've been on pretty much on target?
It's been so far, yes.
We, we've appointed the election workers several meetings ago now, so whenever you're ready with any other PCFs, we've got them on payroll now.
Yep, they're on the operating budget.
We've done all that kind of stuff that we're supposed to do by the book, so I think we're.
Yeah, and I just wanted to just add that there's a very active Democratic town committee in this town, there's not a very active Republican committee, so we want to acknowledge that the first step is with Ed sending the letters to the town committees, so.
I believe that happened.
Yep, I think so.
This year, yes.
It did, yep.
So, in the past, it hasn't.
Happened last year, too. Because they ended up selecting an election person, a registrar that was actually, wasn't qualified to be a registrar, so. I think, I just want the process followed, and I want it to be fair, and I want it to be a rotation in terms of who's asked to work, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just ask clarifying questions?
Yep.
Just because I know what I want.
Yeah.
Going forward, okay.
Of course.
So you're saying by April 15th, both parties should have nominated their worker, poll workers and wardens? As long as the town administrator has reached out to both parties?
The select board are required to notify the chairman of the town party committees, Republican and Democrat, by April 15th, that they may submit the list of party members by June 1st for appointment of election officers.
Okay. And then one of our early July meetings, I think.
It says.
We actually did do the appointment for the election workers.
It says, not, not earlier than July 15th, nor later than August 15th, the select board shall appoint election officers to each precinct, we only have one.
Yep.
Using the list provided by the registrars. If no list were submitted by either party, the select board shall appoint.
The master general law.
Yeah.
Okay, and my next question is.
I think we're, I think we're fine on that, I mean, we've, we've gotten through that process, I mean, we've.
Yes, this year is good.
We've followed the July deadline, and I think we're, we're set on that, but go ahead, Joy.
My next question is, so the deputy warden is only called if the warden cannot make it?
Yes.
Okay, so, but there isn't, so that warden is just from one of the parties, there's not a warden for each?
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay, so I think that's important for people to understand, for the public to understand.
There's one warden.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, good, so.
Got it.
Done.
So is, is this system set up to specifically alienate unenrolled? There's no way for an unenrolled person to serve as an election worker?
So I asked that, and.
I mean, I, I completely understand the list for vote parties.
Yep.
But.
I did.
There's nowhere in there?
I did ask the legal department at elections, and she said, I said, "Can poll workers be unenrolled, or do they have to have party designation to be a worker?" She said, "Yes, they can be unenrolled, only if you're unable to get voters registered in a party."
Yeah, that's included in the master general law, too, John.
Yeah.
Wow, that seems like a problem, but.
Anyway, that's what MGL says right now, anyway, so.
Yeah, I also asked about, you know, registrars being on town committees, sorry.
It says if you can't get them to register, so if you can't convince them to become a D or an R, and they want to stay unenrolled, they're eligible.
Uh, I don't know.
Seems biased, in my opinion.
It, that's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
That it? Yeah.
I think, I think that's it, I think I.
No, that's, thank you.
Clarifying all that.
So, you know, moving forward, the Board of Registars is moving forward.
Yeah, how often do they meet, by the way, the registrars?
So we, we meet once a month.
Okay.
And they were never meeting, they haven't met since 2015.
Yeah, okay, good, well, things are starting to fall into place, so that's good.
Yep.
It says right here, "If no list were submitted by either party, the selectmen shall appoint any qualified registered voter of the town."
Yep, and then it says, if you're looking at the election.
We didn't do that.
I'm sorry?
So that might allow for an unenrolled, is that what you're trying to say?
That would allow for an unenrolled.
That would allow for an unenrolled.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't know the specific number, but I've got to, I'm assuming a third of our community is unenrolled.
So the parties get priority?
Yeah.
Yes, right.
So you're, you're alienating a third of the population?
I'm not.
Let me see.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, you know.
We got it.
Taking it all in.
I know, I know.
Shows a lot of history there.
Yeah, I'm sure there's something that brought that about, but anyway, good.
Thank you for clarifying all that stuff, thanks Lucy, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
An unenrolled can't get elected to the state house, that's what brought it about, sorry.
Do we have a sense of when the special election will be?
Special?
October, November, December, January, when do you think that realistically we'll have a special election?
For what?
Or town meeting.
Or town meeting, I'm sorry. Town meeting, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's getting late, go ahead, I'm in town meeting.
I mean, right now, it's the usual January or February.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
It used to be earlier than that, though.
It kind of depends, if, if we end up getting an idea for this park grant.
Right, then we'll need one like.
We have to have one before December, so.
That's right.
You know, we'll, we should know something maybe within the next month, but I mean, I don't know how far ahead, I mean, if we're gonna be, we'd have to be thinking already about whether we could do it indoors at Norris, or outdoors in November, it's not gonna be too exciting, so, you know, we'd have to be starting to think about planning it, just in case, I suppose, so.
Yeah, okay.
Hopefully, we'll get an idea of whether we even have a chance on that, and there may be, if there's other issues to come up, obviously.
Right.
For the, for the agenda for a special town meeting, yeah, Ed.
And, John?
Yes.
I just think it's, these laws were written long ago, because even, even in the one directly to the Board of Registars, it's directed as, as evenly, evenly divided as possible between the two major parties, which are Republican and Democrat. I mean, and never mind unenrolled, they don't, they don't, they don't get, they, none of them get into, we now have libertarian parties and all kinds of other parties, too.
I know, no, and I completely get that to get the initial list, but then I think once, for example, if the, if the Democratic Party put through two names, and the Republican Party put through three names, so you got five, and I have no idea how many spots you need, let's just say you need seven, if that's all they put through, then it should be up, I would think, it's up to the registrar to go do it, and then the registrar's office on its own should probably go look at.
Registars, it's a board.
The board, the board, the registrar's board should go and look at, okay, let's look at the unenrolled, let's look at the libertarians, let's try to diversify this within town.
Yeah, who knows? All right. Our unenrolled. Okay, moving on, any other necessary business that cannot wait until the September 28th meeting?
Oh, I did want to mention if we could update the town website, the main page with the announcements in regards to the housing, sorry, I'm trying to get into it right now. So we have it updated with the town bylaws meeting, but I would, if we could include the Housing Authority, the Housing Production Meeting on there, on the town website, as one of the announcements.
Huh?
The town website, so it says, "Town bylaws, your input is needed and welcome."
Again, I think we could, yeah, put a link over to the housing meeting or something.
Yeah, if we could have like the same kind of announcement for the Housing Authority.
Those were requested.
Production, okay.
So, so what we need to request.
Okay, all right, all right, I, I wasn't sure what the process was, so that is something we can request, just because there's like a lot of old stuff on here, so I just.
Well, that's part of the trouble with that, the homepage, like we said, is there's so much stuff there, it's hard to even sort through what's really relevant anymore.
Yeah, exactly, just to keep, and then, yeah, if we could also put the ad hoc committee poll on there, too.
Yeah, once we get it, but that will, we'll make that on the volunteer page, that'll be a link to the volunteer page, okay?
Thank you, that's all, I just wanted to understand that.
One of the next agendas, an update on the Doors Green Communities Grant.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that. Let's, let's go through the PCFs first, we've got a couple things to do. So, PCFs, PCF emergency for Ellen Krucheck, is that how you pronounce it?
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency PCF.
Assistant town accountant benefited, part-time benefited 20 hours a week. I hear a motion on the floor to approve the emergency PCF.
I'll second it.
I'll move. You're seconding it, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Well, I just, I don't understand the process here, so, is it because this is an emergency, it's coming before us, prior to going to PPB?
So that we can, it would go to PPB on Thursday, I believe?
It's, it's on here, if they want to. If the board wanted to take a conditional approval, on the condition that it is approved by the PPB, rather than waiting until the meeting on the 28th.
And then another.
Yeah, I just.
I'll amend the motion, then, to say that I'll approve it pending approval by the PQB.
Right, okay, thank you, I'll have a second on that, Ben, please?
Second? Second.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all in favor for the emergency PCF?
Aye.
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 Okay. Is there any reservation about this process or anything?
No, I just, I, Ed has asked me to stand in for him Thursday, so I just want to make sure that when I get questions, I understand.
Okay.
The answer to give.
And then Ed, on the PCF, then, go ahead, finish explaining, so we have an emergency PCF, and then the regular PCF, so.
Right, the emergency PCF would go into effect, but only lasts two weeks, so this would be the regular, normal PCF for this position.
Does it say the amount, the hourly rate?
It is on the PCF.
It is, okay, I see it, yep.
1966, I believe.
Yes, yep.
1966 per hour.
Yep, right.
And 20, 20 hours a week.
20 hours, yep, exactly, okay, fine.
And, and, again, just to clarify, I, I believe it is, but that's the, that's the amount that was approved by budget, right?
Correct.
Yep, correct.
That was one of the positions, I think, that was in the.
It was one of the positions that the select, and I recognize that you weren't on the board at that time, that the select board had identified as being low on the pay scale, so it had received an extra bump.
Gotcha.
But that, the 1966 is what was approved.
Okay, and then next, Ed, go ahead with the town accountant, I don't have that piece of paper in my package, but.
Well, we wouldn't have the information to do the town.
No, that's not, because we were doing the negotiations.
You need to do the permanent, the regular PCF for the assistant town accountant.
I'll make a motion to approve the assistant town accountant permanent position.
Okay.
I just, we just did the emergency.
Correct, all right, could I have a second for the permanent position for the assistant town accountant?
Again, pending PQB.
Pending PQB's signature, yep.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, all right, then, what do we need to do for the town accountant? We have it listed here, but.
I do, because that's only if we're successful in negotiations of a contract, can those pieces be filled in, so.
This would be pending a contract approval and pending QB, PQB?
No, we won't actually touch this at all, if we are successful in executive session.
Yeah.
When we come out of executive session.
Oh, I see.
The board will have to vote in open session to approve the contract.
Yeah.
And at that point, I.
Then we can do this.
Then we can fill in the blanks and actually.
Okay.
Vote these the same way.
That's on hold for the moment, until we get.
Correct.
Okay, correct, all right, thank you. Any question, how's that? All right, next, license and permit, we have one request here for Brian Leclerc, a one-day wine and malt permit for Conant Park, September 26th, and says one to four, I guess, I was confused when I looked at it, because I've seen two or three different names on this, and different times, the one that Paula Mack signed as the permit has 10 to 530, and it's a different name, but then it says permit for Brian Leclerc, so I guess this is just, this is one entity that's doing this, is that right?
Well, yes, it's a family, it's actually, shall we say, a memorial.
Okay.
Get, get together, so different family members have taken on different tasks. In fact, actually, there are three different park permits actually originally issued, so.
Oh, my.
So I can understand the confusion.
I see.
We were confused also, but we got it straightened out.
So we think the one that Paula has signed, which says 10 to 530, is probably the real time?
Well, it's the setup time and everything else, so.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Basically, the, for, for the, shall we say, event.
Yep.
And the one-day alcohol, the times that are on here would be correct from one to four.
Oh, one to four, rather than what the permit says.
Okay, okay.
Rather than what the park permit says.
Okay.
The permit says 10 to 530, but you're saying that's set up, oh.
Yes.
Park permit has setup time and breakdown time in it, so.
Motion to approve license 21 WMO-13 as listed.
I'll second it.
All right.
I have a question, first.
Yes.
Who sets the rates for the use of the pavilion?
The park commission.
Okay, do they collect the fees, or do you? Do they collect the fees, or do you?
They collect the fees for the pavilion.
Okay, because I just noticed a lot of.
We, we collect through our office the fee for the one-day permit.
Oh, okay, a lot of out-of-town residents.
Well, it's, I think people have found that, as compared to what the costs of other places are, that this is very reasonable, so that's why, and we do, and we do charge a little.
More for out-of-town.
A little more for out-of-town. A little more for out-of-town.
Yeah, and this is just for the wine and beer permit, though? It's not for renting the pavilion, or it is?
Separate.
Separate.
What's before us is just the wine and beer?
Just the one.
Right.
Okay.
The one-day wine and malt.
Okay, so we have a motion, I believe it was seconded, did we? Yep, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we have some minutes to approve, that's right, warrants, we're not going to do this, this meeting, we'll do them next meeting. No other documents, minutes to approve, July 13th and July 27th. Does anybody?
Motion to approve both as written.
I have one correction maybe.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a correction, I think, though, hold on.
What a lengthy list of minutes. Who took these up?
Kathy.
Oh, good job.
On the July 27th one, on the second page, under Select Board, so it's the top of the page, the first bullet, Select Board. If you go down to, it was under Joy's report out, there was a stormwater application and two A and R applications were approved, there are zoning bylaws that need review, and solar energy bylaw was reviewed, collaboration with open space was, Airbnb's were discussed, something, something's missing there.
Hmm.
Whether it's grammar, or words, or I'm not sure what, but...
There are zoning bylaws that need to be...
What the collaboration with open space was, and who's talking about Airbnb's? I guess I didn't know. So maybe you could just, I would be fine if we could...
I don't know about, yeah, I don't know about the open space.
If we can correct whatever that was.
Yeah, I know that, I know collaboration with open space, I don't know a collaboration, I mean, Planning Board, I can't remember, I'd have to go back. But I know Airbnb's were discussed in regards to the bylaws, because...
At the Planning Board, so it's not...
At Planning Board.
Nothing to do with open space, so something is just misplaced here somehow. So maybe you could, you could just figure out how to correct that, and I would, I would be fine to do this to...
Yeah, I would look back, I'll look back at my notes.
And with that correction, I would be...
I have two corrections, minor ones, super minor. On July 13th, page one, a motion was moved by Chris Fowles and seconded by John Lumber to nominate Francine Tishman. Francine declined the position and said she would prefer to be the clerk instead. It doesn't state which position it is.
Sorry, it stated what?
A motion, it's under appointments and resignations.
Yep.
The second paragraph, a motion was moved by Chris Fowles and seconded by John Lumber to nominate Francine Tishman. Francine declined the position and said she would prefer to be the clerk instead. It doesn't state which position.
Like, vice chair.
Yeah, it's vice chair, yeah, it just needs to say vice chair.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, what's the other one?
Anything else?
Oh, very minor, page two, under, like, under Chair Groden will send the updated list out of the SV and TA Gibson, a motion was moved by Joy Piper, two and seconded, the two just needs to be removed, that's all.
What?
Yeah, just remove the two after, after her name.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Under, it says Chair Groden, the line underneath that says emotion was moved by Joy Piper, two and assembled, so...
The first indent.
Get rid of the two.
First indent at the top of page two.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah, that's all.
So what do you want changed?
Just get rid of the two.
Get rid of the two.
Right after Piper.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that's all.
Can I ask a question?
Uh-huh.
There was something that got me to sign all the town, all the, all the warrants, there's nothing in here that shows that.
So I'm glad we gave the job back.
We tricked you. No, 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 it's in here, it's in here, it's later, it's in here, it's...
But it was, it was part of that discussion.
Right, well, it was, I think there was an issue of sort of calling it clerk, and then we made the, we did something special for the warrants.
Right, do we authorize Francine to be single signer?
We did, I'm trying to find it here somewhere, hold on.
You found it?
Oh, I mean, I think I read it, hold on. Da-da-da-da-da.
Here it is, the first bullet on the second page.
From your authority.
Select Board member to be primary authorized signer.
That's for the July 13th one?
It's there.
Yes, right, yep.
Okay.
So you're the authorized signer for the payable warrants, and I'm the backup.
Okay, so what's not part of that?
No, you weren't bringing it, you really, you really were put in there, so, yes.
Sorry about that, you're still responsible.
Okay, so with the corrections on, on those minutes, can we, can we agree that we're ready to vote on those and approve those, both?
Yep.
All right, so with those corrections, minutes are approved?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll call them approved, thank you. Okay, anything else in terms of our pending items?
No, just adding it to the next agenda, if you would.
Yeah, get us more of an...
The Doors Green Community Grant.
Yep, more of an update on the Doors grant, okay. And I will try to dig up that thing on the naming rights, too, and see what our agenda looks like there, so we can do some research on that. Select Board meeting September 28th, and then October 12th and October 26th is what our schedule is. And so with that, we will be moving into executive session shortly, and we will adjourn for executive session and may return to open session. But the reason for going into executive session, we have per...
Before you say that, Chris, on that, would, would it be appropriate for us to only go into executive session for the one item? And then if we come out for a vote, we come out for a vote, and then go back in for everything?
Yeah, that's a very good suggestion.
Can we go in and out twice?
You're not here till forever.
Executive session, I mean, take the top one and come out, and then go back into executive session again?
I've never seen it done, so...
Well, this will be a first.
I mean, we're not going to broadcast, right?
When we come back, we got to have broadcast.
We have to broadcast.
Open session, then they have to close again.
Then we get to close again. So we were thinking we could get through everything in executive session and come back.
Or, you know, I mean, you wouldn't necessarily have to stay...
Doesn't have to...
No.
I mean, we could do all of our business, come back out and take care of business, and Ed could always, you know, I mean, we'll know if we're going to be successful in going back out.
That executive session, if we're successful.
Bradley wouldn't have to be here.
Yeah, so what, what's our druthers? What do we want to do?
I would say we go through them and then come out.
Okay, all right, we'll see if we can be expeditious here, all right.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, so we're going into executive session for MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to construct, conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the Town Accountant. Also for, can I put these three together? MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, which is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This would be also for the highway, for the dispatch, and for the police.
Mm-hmm.
And then for MGL 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid, requirements, approval of executive session minutes for August 24th, 2021. So with that, we will call ourselves adjourned. Let's have a roll call, sorry, we need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Lumber, aye.
Ball's aye?
Piper, aye.
Okay.
Tishman, aye.
Okay, and we will move into executive session, and we may return to open session. So we need a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Oh, we just did.
Or did we just adjourn? I don't know.
You just did.
We just did, okay, we're done.
Who made the motion?
Me, and then Joy seconded.
I got your second, but I didn't...
Really, yeah, okay, so we're adjourned at about 9:15, and we may return to open session.
Okay.
Just John's name.
Just John's.
How the heck did I do that? Be amended before it's signed, anyway, so, okay, so none of them need, can be signed.
All right, so we'll open up again in regular session.
Here we go. Here we go.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order of the Select Board for September 14th, 2021. This is a continuation of our earlier meeting, it is 11:20, and we are back from an executive session. And I'm pleased to announce that we have successfully negotiated an employment arrangement with Bradley Oaxton as our new Town Accountant. What we have negotiated is a three-year contract in the amount of $49,504, and this will, all things being relevant, we will hopefully take effect on September 27th. And they have, let's see, we've agreed on all the terms and conditions, including vacation days, 16 days vacation, six days of sick leave, and I think that's basically the main lines here. So with that, could I have a motion from the Select Board to actually approve this contract with Bradley?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good, so now we need to officially...
Yes, there would be two PCFs to go along with that. First one would be an emergency PCF for Bradley Oaxton to serve as the Town Accountant, take effect on September 27th, 30 hours per week, benefited position with an annual salary of $49,504. And these will both be conditional, should be conditional upon them being approved at the PPPB meeting on Thursday evening. The second one would be the regular PCF for Bradley Oaxton as Town Accountant, to take effect on September 27th, again, 30 hours per week, $49,504 annual salary.
Could I have a motion to approve? Do you need them separately, or together? Are they okay together, or?
You can put them together if you wish.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve both of the emergency and the regular PCF for Bradley?
I move...
They're conditional on the PPPB approval on Thursday evening.
Correct, yeah, okay.
I move to approve the emergency and the permanent PCF for Bradley Oaxton as Town Accountant, contingent upon the approval of the PQB at their meeting this Thursday.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Why do we need your emergency one? If the regular one says it's starting September 28th?
Because otherwise, it will require PPPB approval, and then, eh, it'll be tight. The next meeting's the 28th, yeah.
Better safety, sorry.
Yeah, okay, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, approved, so welcome. Looking forward to having you and working with you, and hopefully we'll not have too many challenges to throw your way, but anyway, welcome. Yeah, we don't normally go quite this late, so thank you very much, and we'll sign off on these, and I think...
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourned.
Yeah.
And I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we will consider ourselves adjourned at 11:25.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Ufa, thank you.
Been a great night, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bradley.
Thanks, Bradley.